Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to get started. This is the Madison Metropolitan School District Regular Board of Education Meeting for Monday, January 29th, 2018. So, welcome, everyone, to our meeting this evening. We have quite a bit on the agenda, so I'd like to get started. And we'll start off with the recitation of the vision statement, which is, "Every school will be a thriving school that prepares every student to graduate from high school, college, career, and community-ready." Okay, to start off our meeting, the next item on the agenda will be the recognition resolution. And I'll get it started. Okay, simplifying the culture of excellence embedded in our strategic framework, 21 high school students from across the district completed the High School Research Internship Program. Working with mentors from the University of Wisconsin-Madison, over nine weeks last summer, students conducted research in science and engineering and presented their findings in November at the UW Engineering Center's building. Now, tonight, we'd like to recognize these students for their considerable accomplishments. We'd like to read a formal resolution to commemorate your work and ask that those students come to the stage at this time. So, please come to the stage. Vicki?
I need a copy of the name. Thank you. It doesn't list the names?
Pardon?
Okay, whereas 21 Madison Metropolitan District-- Whereas, 21 Madison Metropolitan School District high school students participated in the 23rd Annual 2017 High School Research Internship Program. Whereas, through this program, each student was paired with a UW Madison researcher and over the summer conducted authentic research, spending a minimum of 25 hours a week for nine weeks, developing and researching various questions, designing protocols for data collection, and collecting data over the course of the summer. Whereas, in the fall semester, each student intern wrote a formal research paper, designed a scientific poster, and communicated their findings to a larger audience at a scientific poster session, celebrating the completion of the internship with associates from the university, teachers, friends, and family members. Whereas, upon completing of the summer research and fall requirements, each student intern earned three-quarters of one high school science credit, as well as one UW Madison credit in independent study in the area of other scientific field. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Madison Metropolitan School District Board of Education recognizes, congratulates, and thanks all the high school research interns for their remarkable achievements. Be it further resolved, this statement be permanently imprinted in the Board of Education minutes for the meeting of January 29th, 2018, signed by James Howard, President, Board of Education.
Great work, Alex. Great work. Okay, now, at this time, I'd like to invite each student to take the microphone and introduce yourself by stating your name, the name of your mentor, and your project title. I would also like to ask the audience, please hold your applause until all the students have been introduced. Appreciate that very much, so, please.
Hello, everybody. My name is Michellea Friedel. I worked under postdoctoral researcher Antonio Brune, and my research concerned the dietary modulation of pancreatic tripsin, chemotripsin, and amylase in northern bob whites.
Hi, my name is Elia Hosokawa. My mentor was Fola Rowolo, a graduate student at the UW, and my research was the influence of lipid oxidized products on gastrointestinal innate and acquired immunity. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Samique Partha, and I'm currently a junior at James Madison Memorial High School. Over the past six months, I've had the great opportunity of interning at the Essamakopoulos Lab, and my mentor's name was Dr. Michael Johnson. It was a pleasure to work with him. My research concerned building a Teton-versikine-strangenic mouse as a tool to study versikine's effect on myeloma.
Hello, my name is Erica Hosokawa. I'm her twin. My mentor this summer was Catherine Payne at the Hartel Lab, with my professor being Richard Hartel, and my project's name was sucrose crystallization rates within syrups using substitutes.
Hi, my name is Kari Weiss, and I interned with, under Dr. Robert Hamers in the UW Department of Chemistry, and my research was on the electrochemical generation of hydroxoradicals in the presence of copper and cerium ions.
Well, I think they deserve a departing hand. What do you think? Okay, after that wonderful news, we'll see if we can at least equal that. The next item on the agenda will be public appearances. And as usual, I'll call up a speaker. You'll have three minutes. And I'll call up two at a time, so the second speaker, please be thinking about moving to the podium upon the completion of the first speaker. So, you have three minutes. Please try to stay within time, because we do have quite a few speakers tonight. So, first speaker tonight will be Cynthia Alaman, and that'll be followed by Susan Geddert. Cynthia, followed by Susan.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Cynthia Alaman. I have a student at West Madison High School, another one at Cherokee Middle School, and lucky me, I have a five-year-old at Midfield Elementary School. So, as you can see, I'm gonna be with you a long time. So, here's the reason why I am now standing here, taking everybody's time, and I will be as brief as possible. I have long had concerns with the behavioral and disciplinary plans with the school, with the implementation of them from the elementary level, and sadly, at a high school level, in a much more difficult situation. I initially tried to make some steps and talk to people and reach out and try to figure out what we can do different to either implement the current policies or change the policies in place. I stopped, because it seemed to be a lengthy process, and I am a mother of three, a full-time employee. I recently quit my job, because my freshman, my incoming freshman at the time, was harassed at school in the summer of 2016. I was never informed of the issue. It continued. My daughter has suffered depression and anxiety for a long time before this. She had been doing very good for a while, and very excited to go into high school, join the cheerleading team, that it would be a good way to go in with a social platform, and motivated to keep her grades up. In the fall, she started cutting again, and I started to be more concerned about her. Had no idea where this was coming from. In the winter, at a cheerleading game, at a game while she was cheerleading, there was a police presence, a big issue. I still had no idea what was going on. In spring, she reported to her principal that she had been sexually assaulted in school grounds. This was before spring break. I still had no information on the issue. The police, after this happened and we came back from spring break, I found out through a friend of mine that my daughter had confided in. I went to the school, demanded action, spoke to people, still didn't know the full extent of the situation. Two days later, my daughter told me, police came to talk to her. A rape crisis counselor was there with her. I still had no information, no idea. And it was then that I sat down my daughter and asked for detailed information, everything that had transpired. I have been an advocate for my children for a very long time. It is my number-one job. I quit my job to ensure that my daughter's safety was my first concern. We've been at this since the summer of 2016. A safety plan was put in place. This was done, that was done. They talked to the kid every time he broke the safety plan continuously. And I'm sorry to make this a little long, but two weeks, three weeks ago, we had another issue. This was after we came back in the fall, and my daughter was put in a class with this boy again. Repeatedly, the ball was dropped in a lot of ways. And I am now at a point where I try to handle this within the school. I try to be as reasonable as possible. This is a young African-American boy. I did not want something in his record that was gonna follow him forever. So, I hoped that we would resolve this within the safety plan and the policies in place.
You're gonna have to finish up.
And it hasn't happened. So, now, my concern, to finalize this, is how do we do better by these kids, both of them? Because if we don't end this behavior, if we don't address this behavior now, this boy's next step is prison. Now, I'm a reasonable adult who is concerned for my daughter's safety, and I've done everything for her.
Please finish up.
But something needs to be done differently. And the policies either need to change or need to be enforced better. So, that's my hope, and I will continue to follow through with this and continue to come until I see some change. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Susan, followed by Anna Jalinski.
Hi. My name is Susan Geddert, and you've seen me before. I have children at Crestwood Elementary and Jefferson Middle Schools this year. It's my seventh year in this district. I am speaking to you, because I am one among many parents and families who are increasingly concerned about staff morale and teacher attrition in the schools. When I read the strategic framework on the MMSD website, as I have done over and over again, I find nothing to disagree with in that document. Of course, every school needs great teachers, shared leadership, high-quality professional development, and partnership with families to succeed. You can't really argue with that. But those bullet points in the strategic framework do not fully reflect what we see, not at the schools where my kids attend, and not at other schools where I know other families and teachers. We see teachers who are professionally confined by rigid schedules and boxed curricula. They are frustrated by the lack of opportunity to engage in meaningful collaboration with their colleagues. They are sometimes in unsafe classrooms because of student behavior and little or no support. Above all, they are afraid to speak up about any of this, because they risk being labeled as chronic complainers who are opposed to change. Despite these conditions, we still have many excellent teachers who are making the best of the situation. They are rising to the occasion the best they can, and their students are still learning. My own kids have always had positive and welcoming relationships with teachers and school staff. But a lot of them, a lot of teachers, are exhausted, burnt out, and totally frustrated, and that's not good for, excuse me, for anyone. We still have them for now, but I fear the time is coming that many will choose to take their talents elsewhere and leave the district. I will speak up. I and many other parents in our school community support Madison teachers. I know we can do better. Our schools have amazing, brilliant, capable, creative staff with solid training and expertise. We need to recognize and value that expertise. Whenever big decisions are coming down the pike about things like curriculum, behavior management, allocation for student support services, we need to get meaningful input from staff. And that encompasses a whole lot more than a couple of power questions on a climate survey or a listening session a few times a year with a small advisory board. I think the key word here is trust. Teachers need to know that their families and district leaders trust their expertise. In turn, teachers need to be able to trust that they can speak about what they know best, creating a learning environment for students that is engaging, responsive, enriching, and safe, without fear of retribution. If we trust teachers to do their best work, students will flourish. Kids know the difference between being taught and being taught at, and they behave accordingly. Remember that the learning environment for students and the work environment for teachers are one and the same. If we want to do right by our students, we have to do right by our teachers as well.
Thank you. Please, please hold your applause. This is a board meeting. Please hold your applause. Anna, followed by Joanne. Joanne Jenke.
Hello. My name is Anna Jalinski, and I come to you as a former MMSD teacher. I left MMSD and teaching completely this past June for a variety of reasons, but I'm only here, I'm here to only touch on the most pressing concerns. I don't wanna stand up here and spew complaint after complaint, and I'd rather just share what I think needs to be fixed, so you will continue to not lose teachers like myself. First, I wanna talk about the lack of staff in our buildings. I finished my ten-year career in MMSD, fifth grade at Crestwood, where last year, we had one time, one part-time psychologist, one part-time social worker, one behavior support, from two the previous year. And personally, in my classroom, where over a third of my students had IEPs, I was only allocated half-time support for a CC teacher. I had multiple students with major mental health issues, and many who were victims of trauma. There was hardly anyone at our school who was around enough who could give these students what they needed the most, mental health support. As I continued to cry out for help, I was continued to be shot down by the district, which left me feeling helpless, extremely unsupported, and most importantly, I felt like I and my students didn't matter. The priorities in our district seem to be all in the wrong places, which lead me to my next point, curriculum. Stop spending the money that we could use on more staff on this canned curriculum. I understand the want for some consistency and resources, but I feel like we are not using the strongest resource of them all, the teachers. The teachers, they are smart people. They are creative professionals who can seriously work magic in the classroom. Do not mandate that they use these one-size-fits-all boxes of lines to spew out. Yeah, they can come with great ideas, and yeah, they can work for some kids and for some teachers, but not all. Let the teachers have freedom to choose what works best for them and for their students. Let them choose this slowly. The implementation process is a slow process, not an all-or-nothing. Give it time to work. Continuous change from year to year is not the way to see if something is working and if it's the right choice. Lastly, put children in the center. There's too much emphasis on academics. These children have developing brains, and when they are overloaded with information, it has the adverse effect on learning. I currently work at Epic as a trainer, and I teach adults. And when I started training, I was told to always allow them 10- to 15-minute breaks every hour to hour and a half. These are adults. How can we expect our children to listen or work for longer than that? And piggybacking on that, bring back unstructured recess time. Give kids time to clear their minds throughout the day, so that they can move on to new learning with a clear head. They need time to play with each other and figure each other out, without adults breathing down their backs and structuring their every move. I hope you take my thoughts and suggestions into consideration. I'm scared that you're gonna see a lot more teachers like me leaving for the same reasons. MMSD cannot afford to let this happen. Please take care of your staff, and please take care of those kids.
Thank you. Joanne, followed by Kate Moran.
Hello. I'm Joanne Yonke, mom to a sophomore at Memorial who is getting college recruitment mail due to her PSAT scores, and a seventh grader at Jefferson who is learning to read with the help of a fantastic cross-categorical teacher. I am proud of both of them. I am also concerned about my younger daughter, whose increasingly segregated education setting is an isolating experience, but not an isolated experience at MMSD. Families like mine have heard a great deal of fine rhetoric in the district about district commitment to inclusive education for our children with IEPs. We are also seeing an increasing divide between that rhetoric and the reality. I only found out about a consulting agenda item on Friday, so my time has been limited, but I do bring expertise both as a librarian and as a policy analyst when it comes to seeking information and putting together a rapid response. And what I'm seeing is evidence of a divide between the RFP rhetoric and the reality of education resource strategies, or ERS, to whom the district is proposing to award $100,000 consulting contract on resource distribution for special education and the Behavior Education Plan. I'm particularly concerned about a 2010 piece on special education, in which ERS claimed that schools and staff tend to over-identify students in order to capture extra special education dollars to their district. And then they made these remarkable policy recommendations. The federal government could exercise leadership here by defining placements over a number, 11 or 12 percent, for example, as not consistent with placing students in the least restrictive environment possible. While very small districts may need to be considered at the state level, there is no reason to expect that the medical incidence of mental retardation varies significantly across states. States, too, should establish a funding cap, a level of placement in special education above which they refuse to provide more state dollars for special education placements. Districts that wish to place more students in special education can do so, but will need to raise local funds to support these students. Now, one could make the argument that since such caps are illegal, we don't need to worry about ERS coming in and cost-cutting. Okay, but they are recommending to impose caps. And on top of that, I don't believe that our MMSD staff are over-identifying students to boost the district's bottom line. Of course, the IEP process brings resources to bear to meet a student's individual needs, but state and federal special education dollars have never met that need. And state special education categorical aid in particular has eroded to down under 26 percent. And our staff know, I mean, these are smart people here. They know that when we obligate the district to meet the needs of each new student with a disability, we're squeezing a balloon. The money has to come from somewhere within the district, so someone else gets pinched. If anything, our staff get this to the point that they feel pressure to under-identify. Our staff get it. ERS apparently does not. Now, given that we've got expertise right here in the district, I don't see, I don't see a need to spend our scarce dollars to bring in more out-of-state consultants. Let's do this in-house. Let's listen to the folks on the ground who know what's going on, and then let's start making the reality match the rhetoric and get to work on reversing the inclusion slide, 'cause our kids really can't wait for this for much longer.
Kate Moran, followed by Chris Curzey.
Hi, I'm Kate Moran. I'm the Chair of Disability Pride Madison, and so that's what brings my concern here tonight. And I'm here because I've heard a lot of concerns about ERS. And I just wanna know why you're considering spending so much money when I hear that the schools are so under-resourced on consultants, when, again, as Joanne said, there are so many experts here. It just doesn't seem to me to be a good use of taxpayer money. And I hope you could spend that money on something more valuable to the students, like increasing staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Curzey, followed by Oscar Morelos.
So, you've probably noticed that a whole bunch of us are wearing red tonight. MMSD parents and staff are wearing red tonight to show our shared solidarity for our public schools. And parents are also wearing red to show that we support our staff and that we're concerned about the issue of staff morale. We want our educators to know that we have their backs. I've been an MMSD parent for 10 and a half years. We, I know that we have a lot of really amazing people working in our schools and caring for our children, and I wanna thank all of you for the role that you play in supporting our staff and creating the conditions for excellence here. In recent years, however, I've increasingly heard frustration and fear voiced by our staff members. I share a lot of the concerns you already heard. We need to trust our staff to make decisions about what they teach, how they teach it, and what they learn through professional development. We're losing too many exceptional educators. As you develop the budget for next year and the strategic framework, I urge you to take the issue of staff morale seriously. I'm also here to talk about the proposed contract with ERS, and I urge you to vote no on this contract. ERS has questionable expertise in special education and restorative justice, but they have ample expertise in student-based budgeting, which is a model where dollars follow the students. This is a hallmark of corporate school reform and the school choice movement, and it's not the right direction for MMSD. Student-based budgeting can make small schools untenable, and it is commonly paired with reforms like charter schools, online instruction, contracting out fine arts instruction, and basing staff accountability-- basing staff accountability increasingly on test scores. Because student-based budgeting is one of the things that ERS does best, I'm concerned that contracting with them will result in a shift to this budget model. So I'm going to shift gears for a moment. If you've seen the movie Lady Bird, there's a really wonderful moment in that film where there's a character who equates love with attention. I'm just one of many MMSD parents and educators who love our public schools so much that we willingly give up our free time and a lot of our sleep for them. We volunteer to run programs in our schools and help kids succeed. We raise money to equip classrooms, build playgrounds, and fix things that are broken. We love our public schools. However, we are growing weary of watching our school district funnel public funds to consultants who promulgate corporate reforms under the specious guise of inclusion, equity, and excellence. We love our public schools, we love our staff, and we are paying attention. Thank you for paying attention to my remarks. I urge you to take the issue of staff morale seriously and to vote "no" on the ERS contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Oscar Morales, followed by Betsy Lawrence.
I had it all figured out and now, okay. Two years ago, our Omega School 2015-16 contract was bought up in the middle of the year. I was not invited to come and speak at that meeting. If I would have been here, I would have shared that nationwide, the GED graduation numbers for the new 2014 computer-based test had fell 90%. But I'll also let you know that the numbers fell 90% in Wisconsin, in which I was quoted in the Wisconsin State Journal. 90% in the MATEC region and 90% at Omega School. As a result of those disappointing numbers, and there was probably no one more disappointed than I, and without having a chance to make a presentation or have, or answer any questions that you might have had, there was a decision to cut our program by 50%. If I was here, I would have reminded you that Omega School has helped hundreds of students of MMSD 4th-year seniors who were severely credit-deficient earn a GED credential. We had dealt with many academic and non-academic challenges to find success. I would have also shared that we had made several significant steps to address these challenges by providing free laptop computers, using more practice tests to help students accurately gauge their distance from passing, being more clear which students that were not appropriate to serve due to their low reading levels. We focused on developing critical thinking skills, and we added increased attendance hours. The 2016-17 results had demonstrated that these interventions had helped turn things dramatically around. In 2013, in 2016-17, we had a smaller contract to serve 10 students and were expected to have six graduates. At the end of the last year, we had 14 graduates, over 200% increase in graduation rates. I realize tonight is just a formality that the contract will be approved, given the fact that we've been providing services for two semesters. I am concerned that once again, our contract is done in the middle of the semester. Either this means I am being treated as someone very special, since I know all of you here, or it means I need to be worried, given the district is proposing a new school that might provide GED services. Tonight, you will hear from two graduates and Omega School volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Betsy Lawrence, followed by Ali Madro.
Hi, I'm Betsy Lawrence and I'm a volunteer at Omega School tutoring students studying for the HSED, GED tests. My background with Omega actually goes back to the 1970s. My husband was one of the first teachers at Omega and I knew people who actually started Omega. So I feel very connected with Omega. And I recently retired from my regular work and asked Oscar if I could volunteer and he said, "Sure." I didn't know what I was getting into. It's been a wonderful experience, but just let me say that. Omega has been around since the 1970s. This is our 45th year, and while the teachers, students, and volunteers have changed, the mission and goals have not. Students are people who have, for whatever reason, been forced to leave school at some point in their young lives. Omega gives them the chance to finish their schooling and attain an HSED, GED diploma, thus giving them the option of pursuit of higher education, the possibility of better jobs and better lives, but most certainly greater self-respect and fulfillment. They're all people who want to change their lives and complete an error in their lives. That translates into a determination to work hard at preparing for the HSED, GED tests. Omega is an easy place to study and learn. It's quiet, with enough room for students to work by themselves or with a teacher or volunteer tutor. There's a feeling of quiet determination, concentration, respect, and affirmation in Omega's building. But Omega is more than just a place to study. The staff has respect and empathy for the students as people who have lives that have not had education as an easy opportunity. The staff is consistently accessible, supportive, and friendly. They are interested in all of the students and want to see them succeed in this important quest. Students are constantly encouraged in their preparation for the tests, working one-on-one with teachers and volunteers. Since 1973, Omega School has helped thousands of students achieve a general education diploma and has become a Madison institution. With the support of their friends and families, Omega students have networks of encouragement to keep them going. In this way, Omega School has affected the lives of many more people than just those who have gotten their GEDs there. Omega has provided HSED and GED instructional services to 4th-year high school students with funding from MMSD. This funding has helped hundreds of students complete an important part of their lives before moving on to the rest of their lives. MMSD funding for the second year of this two-year agreement is important not only for Omega School and its students, but for the community that Omega supports by its mission and by extension for Madison itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Ali Madro, followed by Anthony Cooper.
Good evening, y'all. Thank you so much for your leadership. I want to start by thanking the mom who spoke first. I think it's really essential, we owe it to our students, to give them the skills to navigate consensual relationships with one another. And I thought it took tremendous courage to come up here and say what she had to say. So I hope that you all reach out to her and make time to listen to her and then move forward with an incredible sense of how important it is that our children understand how to treat one another well. I'm speaking on behalf of Omega and I am hoping that you all renew the contract and understand the importance of that work. I graduated from MMSD at a time when 38% of African-American students were graduating. And there was a joke, that isn't really a joke, that we would, that we would say or that folks would kind of talk about, that if you hadn't graduated by the time you were 19, you would get your GED in the Dane County Jail. Students need options outside of incarceration to achieve success and to be recognized academically and intellectually. Omega is an amazing program that offers an incredible amount of support to its students and the children of its students. There's a daycare in the facility and that's an incredible, meaningful opportunity to young folks with children. So I urge you all to support Omega and to renew the contract and to continue to give students options when they're not able to obtain documentation that validates their intelligence and their academic capacity within our schools, which happens far more often than it should. And that's a reality we have to work together to address. I also want to stress the importance of the fact that Omega is led by a person of color and that the leadership of people of color has been serving our community when the leadership of white folks has failed communities of color over and over and over again. So thank you all so much for your time this evening and thank you so much for your leadership. I'll see you soon.
Thank you. Mr. Cooper.
Hello, everyone. Well, I'm definitely here in support of Omega School, not only talking as a graduate, but then also as a board member as well. For myself, I was one of the ones that, in my life, I actually, I dropped out of school but I knew that I needed to, or to get ahead in life. I knew I needed to basically get a HSED or even a GED. I was lucky enough to get my HSED and then continue to go to college from there. One of the things is, you know, and in support of Omega School is the fact that it's giving students the opportunity. Just to kind of give you just a little snippet about myself, as far as when I decided to go to Omega School, I was released from prison. From being released to prison and saying, you know, when everyone was shutting their doors on me as far as being able for employment, there were certain jobs that said, you know, I had to have my high school diploma. But yet, I knew at that time, I didn't really feel comfortable in going to like a Madison College or some other school in order to try to get my high school diploma, but I knew it was necessary, not only for myself, but also for my kids to be able to see that their father had their, at least got a high school diploma. Because that was something that I knew that they had to have in order to at least make some type of leap further than their father. So I had to lead by example. So I'll make it quick. So, you know, I knew that by getting my high school diploma, that was going to give me at least some type of standing ground to be able to make a better life, not only for myself, but for my family. Through Omega, you know, but just having the smaller classes, being able to talk to people one-on-one and be able to have some real conversations and navigate the system, it was helpful for me. You know, now you're looking at someone during those days that's been 17, yeah, just about 17 years ago. You know, now you're looking at someone who's definitely, I've been able to make some changes in the community, been able to help other people get their high school diploma. And again, not only did I lead by example, I have two sons that who graduated from East High School, but then also been able to show other people to be able to lead the way. It's important. And again, I would just say the same thing, whatever you can do to support Omega High School, I'm sorry, Omega School, please do. Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes our public speakers for tonight. Thanks to all the speakers and sharing of the information. You have to sign up by 6 o'clock. Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. And I'll move that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the regular meeting dated October 30th, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions, comments, suggestions? Morton, your advisory vote, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Kate, are you there?
I'm here. I said aye.
All right, I just wanted to make sure. Mr. Merks.
I would like to ask a staff member to speak to Cynthia, the first woman who spoke tonight. I expected one of our staff members to go check in with her about the communication issue. She's inexperienced and I haven't seen that happen, so I don't know who would be appropriate who's here tonight, but I'd like to make that request.
Request is duly noted and I saw the superintendent nod in affirmative, so I'm sure that'll be taken care of. If not, please call me. Sometimes the best thing to do is to get in touch with folks, so. Thank you, Mr. Merks. Okay, it's been moved and seconded and approved the minutes. Okay, next item on the agenda, Board Presidents' announcements and reports. Nikki Vandermeulen and Anna Moffett recognized as 2018 Women to Watch. Congratulations to the Madison School Board members Nikki Vandermeulen and Anna Moffett who were named as 2018 Women to Watch by Bravo Magazine. Women to Watch celebrates Nikki, Anna, and 16 other Madison-area women who are leading change in 2018. Read their stories at bravamagazine.com or pick up the January issue at your local store. Anna and Nikki, thank you for your work that you do on behalf of our students and families. Congratulations on the well-deserved honor. James Madison Memorial Student Receives 2017 Advanced Placement State Scholar Award. Congratulations to Memorial Senior Christopher Zoo who received the 2017 Advanced Placement AP State Scholar Award. The College Board grants the award annually for students' performance on AP exams. Students are chosen for the award by earning scores of three or higher on the greatest number of AP exams, and then the highest average score, at least 3.5, on all AP exams they have taken. Well done, Christopher, and best of luck in your future. The 2018 State Education Convention. I attended the State Education Convention last week, sponsored by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, and the Wisconsin Association of School Business Officials. Now, during the delegate assembly, the MMSD Amendment to Resolution 18.06 regarding perpugal reimbursement for transporting voucher pupils passed successfully. Now, the resolution now supports legislation to require the state to fully fund, as a categorical aid, the cost to local public school districts of providing transportation to pupils who attend all public and private schools, not simply those through a taxpayer-funded voucher program. Thank you to my fellow board members for your guidance on these resolutions, which come from school districts all over the state. Actually, that's two years in a row that all of our suggestions have been taken, so we're bad in the house. So thanks to board members for your suggestions. Okay, that concludes Presidents' announcements and reports. We'll continue on to superintendents' announcements and reports. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Board President Howard. Sue Gore, would you please join me up on stage? And we'll just give her a minute before we get started. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm looking forward to giving you an update on one critical component of our work as a school district, which focuses on building deeper understanding among all of our educators about what it means to create racial equity in our schools and classrooms, a journey that I think we're all excited to be on together. As you know, we've been working with the National Equity Project for a few years now, an organization with a rich history of developing what they call equity consciousness and commitment, as well as helping us develop leadership skills to put that consciousness into action. Heidi Gill, I want to point out, is here tonight. She's been working very closely with us for several years. I also want to highlight that she is a former teacher from Wright Middle School, right here in Madison. So she's a true member of the MMSD team. Our ultimate goal, yeah. Heidi, did you teach at Omega, too? Oh, oh, right, Heidi! Yes! Oh, my God, isn't that unbelievable? Yeah, it is a small world. That's wonderful. And we're really lucky to have her as a partner. Our goal through this ongoing, deep work on racial equity is to have a positive impact on classroom practice and student learning, ensuring that every educator, no matter their racial or cultural background, is a culturally responsive educator. In other words, our goal is beyond just being able to recognize racial inequities at the systemic or individual levels. That's important, right? We want to be able to recognize them and dis- learning experiences, because we know learning is all about productive struggle. And if you don't have trust in the classroom, you're not going to be able to, to, to allow yourself to struggle, um, and come out of it. Uh, this is not an initiative in our minds. This is about all teachers, um, becoming, uh, even better allies to students and, and particular students of color. Um, we believe that this is a way of educating. As you may have heard, Gloria Latson Billings talked recently that this is not work that happens in one year or two years. This is a lifelong project. Um, this is about an educator, through their own reflection, um, self-actualizing, right, over the, the life of, of, of being in this career. Um, we think it is, uh, a beautiful part of being a teacher and it's an obligation, um, if you are a teacher. So, we're committing to this for the long term. Um, you can see that, uh, since we started in fifteen, sixteen, working with the Racial Equity Project, um, we keep going deeper. We started with working with, uh, a small, fairly small number of leaders, principals, uh, school-based leadership team members, um, some key central office members, really trying to do the inside-out work to understand our own implicit bias, to understand structural racism and the history of racism in our country. Um, we have expanded and deepened this work over the last couple of years, now working, um, with a, a fairly large cohort of teachers. We're working with, um, all of the teachers in schools that receive intensive support, K eights. We're working, uh, with ninth grade teacher teams. Um, we're working with the entire staff at three schools, part of a small cohort, um, that Sue will tell you a little bit more, uh, in a moment. Um, uh, and we are starting to cultivate a group of equity leaders called Equity Fellows that is, uh, part of our work to figure out how to make sure that this work can be sustained over time. Um, as much as we love Heidi, the goal is not forever to, to need a partner. We need to build internal capacity so we can sustain it. Um, so, what I'd like to do is pass it over to Sue. Um, I want to recognize that Sue Gord is now our Executive Director of Professional Learning and Leadership. Um, she started that job this fall. We're thrilled that she's taken on this position. Some of you may know Sue from her previous work, um, uh, helping us, uh, learn how to provide teachers with better and more effective feedback to improve their practice, as well as principals. We're, we're excited that she's leading this work. She's going to be talking about the progress that we've made this year. Um, she's going to point to some promising data. This is something that's hard to measure, um, uh, and maybe impossible, but there are some indicators that we think, um, are really promising. And of course, she's going to talk about next steps for the remainder of this year, so.
Thanks, Jen. Am I, like, on and everything?
I think so. Yeah, just pull it close.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everybody. If you hear my voice quiver, it's because I am so cold that my teeth are pretty much shattering over here, so, um, so I'm really happy to be here.
Could you tap your mic? I'm not sure it's on. Oh, okay.
Yeah, just, yeah, pull it real close.
I think it's on forward.
Forward towards me?
No, I think it's on. You can hear it.
Okay.
Just speak a little closer to it.
Okay. Hello?
Yep.
Okay, so, um, my role tonight is to talk about our progress to date with the National Equity Project, and we've centered the presentation really on four different themes that encompass the work that we've done, um, so far this year, or, uh, that builds on work that we've done the prior two years. Um, so to start out with, uh, we're going to talk a little bit about how we've deepened equity-focused facilitative leadership with our principals and SBLTs. Uh, this year, we purchased the text by Zaretta Hammond called Culturally Responsive Teaching in the Brain, and we've used that text as our anchor text for professional learning. Um, I think this has been a really high-leverage, um, way of using resources in that it is really, uh, supporting us and having a common understanding and a common language around what we mean by culturally responsive teaching. So I think that's been, um, extremely powerful. Um, in doing that work this year with our principals and SBLTs, we began our work, um, in, in anchoring it around learning partnership. And as a part of the learning partnership, a key, um, aspect of that is building meaningful relationships between students and teachers, so that we create that high-trust, low-stress learning environment, an environment where students feel both validated and affirmed for who they bring to the classroom and what they bring to the classroom. Uh, in terms of, uh, the student-teacher relationship, uh, the, the relationship is really a two-way, uh, partnership in that not only does the student learn from the teacher, but the teacher learns from the student by studying what is effective, uh, by allowing that student voice to share what is working and what isn't working, and then making adaptations to the instruction based off that feedback from students. So, that idea of learning partnership has been central to our work with principals and our SBLTs. Theme number two, uh, is thinking about deepening our work around culturally and linguistically responsive practice, uh, focused on some of our teacher groups that are charged with accelerating student, uh, progress, particularly for our students of color. In our ninth grade on-track leadership teams, they focused on developing common success criteria, engagement strategies, and grading practices to increase the predictability of practices necessary to support ninth grade success. The National Equity Project has supported planning with these teams so that common expectations are designed through a lens of cultural responsiveness. Intensive support elementary and middle schools have engaged in ongoing professional learning focused on research-based literacy practices that support accelerated literacy proficiency. The National Equity Project has supported the planning and presentation of these sessions, focusing on relationship-building for low-stress learning environments. And finally, our instructional coaches have worked with the National Equity Project to deepen their understanding of what it means to coach for equity. They've done this through the use of coaching tools, language scaffolds, and opportunities for practicing coaching within their professional learning that happens monthly.
What's a language scaffold?
I'm sorry?
What is a language scaffold?
A language scaffold, they're like sentence stumps that can be used in your coaching based on, um, where the coachee is in their practice.
Thank you.
Uh, in, in terms of, uh, theme number three, um, we, uh, last year identified a small group called NEP Cohort Schools. Schools applied to be in this group where they received more intensive professional learning and worked with the National Equity Project around deepening their understanding and practice of culturally, uh, responsive teaching. The schools Glenn Stevens, Orchard Bridge Elementary, and Toki Middle School, um, were supported in focused development of their school-based leadership team and deepening their facilit-, their, and their, deepening their ability to facilitate discussions and learning centered on culturally responsive teaching with small teacher groups within the school. So essentially what happened is members of the school-based leadership team and some teacher leaders received support in how to facilitate group reflection and discussion. So, teacher groups across the school are engaging the cycle of inquiry around their practice, where they're reflecting on what's working, um, and what might need, uh, adaptation in order to be culture, more culturally responsive. At West High School, the work is much more recent, and the National Equity Project is working with their administrative leadership team around, uh, focusing their team, uh, and focusing on supporting their team to lead for equity at West.
So, yeah. Can you clarify the timeline with the Stevens, Orchard Bridge, Toki Middle School? You said last year, did that start last, like, September of 2016, or?
Yeah, yes. It started at the beginning of the year.
September of 2016.
Yeah, so this is year two.
Yeah.
Correct. Um, one of the important things I think to notice about this as well is this would be a strategy for building that internal capacity, and, um, an example of that would be in our February Leadership Institute, we'll be having a panel of teachers from the cohort schools share with us what they've learned, uh, since they've done their work with the National Equity Project and what they've learned about, um, leadership in their school of the work. Uh, the final theme is, uh, very new for us, um, the development of our Equity Fellows Cohort Group, and this has been, uh, whoops, sorry. This has been, uh, very exciting work, um, and again, this is aimed at building that internal capacity, um, where we have identified a diverse group of roles and perspectives, uh, from the dis-, across the district, uh, within the members of the cohort group. And, um, we want to build their capacity to lead the work around racial equity and disrupt racialized outcomes. During the initial meetings, the group identified current systems and root causes for racialized disparities and systemic areas of focus for their leadership as a, um, Equity Fellow Group. Next steps in our next meeting will be to identify the professional learning that that group needs in order to reach, uh, in order to be prepared for that leadership across the district. Um, in terms of who those people are, this is a list of our Equity Fellows identified this year via that application process. Uh, on this past Saturday, we had our full-day, uh, retreat with this group, and I just want to shout out to them, uh, they are a very committed group of educators who are deeply, um, interested in seeing racialized disparities eliminated in our district, um, as evidenced by the fact that they spent a full Saturday together, um, working on this cause. Um, and so, as Jen, I had said in her introduction, uh, this is adaptive work that we're doing, and so to measure, uh, the outcomes, to measure its success is, is difficult. We have worked with our research office to identify some indicators that will offer us insight into the progress that we're making. Um, so we're going to take a look at a few, uh, pieces of re-, uh, of, um, I guess, evaluation data, um, starting with our Leadership Institutes and Principal Meetings, where we take survey data after each event. Um, then we'll look at some of the climate survey results for MMSD late leaders, and also for our cohort schools that we mentioned earlier. So as you look to the left of the screen, you can see each one of the events that occurred and what the identified outcome was relative to culturally responsive teaching. On the right, you can see the survey results on a rating of, uh, one to five. You can see that five being strongly agree. Um, we have some very strong results from the survey. Our, um, aim when we look at professional learning is we hope for scores that are above a four-point-oh, uh, when we deliver professional learning. That would mean that our participants either agree or strongly agree that the learning was effective. And so you can see that our results there have been pretty strong. In terms of the climate survey data from our leadership, um, we know that our, our climate survey is just launching for this year, so we're actually looking at data from 2015, 16, and 16, 17, and we look forward to sharing with you what we learned this year. But as you can see, we can see growth between 15, 16, and 16, 17 in, uh, questions relative to, uh, climate, uh, and cul-, and cultural values of, and diversity. In terms of our NEP Cohort Schools, um, our climate survey reflects, um, that our cohort schools are valuing diversity as compared to the non-cohort schools. Um, as you can see, the NEP cohort schools showed larger increases in agreement on questions pertaining to valuing diversity. So in the lower, uh, right-hand corner there, um, a plus fourteen percent versus ten percent. Additional questions in the climate survey, uh, for our NEP cohort schools, uh, focused on responsive instruction also indicate some promising results, uh, with an increase of twenty-two percent responding positively about resp-, the state of responsive instruction in their school versus fifteen percent for our non-NEP cohort schools.
And are these all staff responses, student responses, parent responses?
Those are all staff responses.
So, y'all staff?
Yeah, eh, essentially because we're, we're focusing on the professional learning aspect of it for the staff.
Impact on the staff.
Yeah. And so finally, um, in looking ahead, our plan for the remainder of the year is to continue our work with principals and SBLTs with a focus on learning partnership and continuing to develop their ability to create the conditions necessary for learning partnerships to thrive in their schools. Our cohort schools will continue to refine their collaboration processes, um, aimed at reflecting on what they're learning from their students about the efficacy of their instruction and making those adaptations for more responsive instruction. And our Equity Fellows will, um, actually engage in the professional learning necessary for them to begin to, um, lead and facilitate some of the work across the district and develop resources to support that work. We will be providing you with an update about our Equity Fellows and their work, probably somewhere, um, late spring, early summer, kind of a timeline, and, uh, then we'll develop a, a plan that, uh, considers what kind of sustainability. And so I would just like to point, uh, to conclude to a couple of things. I think the work with the cohort schools and the work with the Equity Fellows is really aimed at building that internal capacity, so over time, um, we will be less dependent on our, our consult with the National Equity Project, as they will have successfully built internal capacity with us around our work on racial equity and culturally responsive teaching.
I think at this point, we just will pass it back to you, James. We want to thank again Heidi, all of the many people who've been helping bring this, uh, work to life in our schools. Racial equity work and focus on culturally responsive teaching is not a new concept for many of our teachers. I mean, when I say it's lifelong work, it has been lifelong work. Um, but we're excited that we're building a common language, a common way of, um, of, uh, just being and, and talking and, uh, exploring our practice with one another that I don't think is, is threatening. It's about, uh, as I said at the beginning of this presentation, helping us all become stronger allies to children of color. So, I'll hand it back to you, James.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jen. Um, so, I guess we'll just move right to questions. So, do, do any board member have any questions? Uh, Anna?
Um, just real quickly, I think you stated that, that the Equity Fellows had worked together and were identifying root causes. Was, are there any that folks have established are root causes or systemic barriers that we're working toward to address?
Yeah, I, I think a, much of what they've talked about is rooted in beliefs about student capacity and, uh, working on the implicit biases that we all have, learning to recognize them and understand, uh, the impact that those biases can have on the learning environment. I think that would be, um, one. And I think also, uh, school-based folks have identified, um, focus, that we need to maybe narrow our focus, and they've talked about the school improvement planning goals and, uh, streamlining that, that process, narrowing those goals, so that, uh, you know, we can focus on a few things and do it well and really go deep.
Kind of interesting that only two of the fellows are classroom teachers. And is that deliberate, is that?
Oh, I think it's more than that.
About four, maybe.
Five, I've got Emily Brown, five K, and Rachel Stone, four to three.
Well, I guess we would count in there, uh, an instructional coach as someone who's...
Well, that's not a classroom teacher.
Okay. Amy's a social studies teacher.
That's a school-based person, but that's not a classroom teacher.
Yeah.
That's a direct responsibility for students.
Right. There are three classroom teachers.
Five, Emily Brown, 5K, and Rachel Stone, 4A.
Well, I guess we would count in there an instructional coach as someone who's...
Well, that's not a classroom teacher.
Okay. Amy's a social studies teacher.
That's a school-based person, but that's not a classroom teacher.
Yeah.
That's a direct responsibility for students.
There are three classroom teachers. I think Amy, Amy's also a social studies teacher at West. I think you might have missed that. But nevertheless, yeah.
So, yeah, so in answer to that question, first of all, it was dependent on who applied. Second of all, it was dependent on creating a racially diverse group and the thought of how can we build capacity in folks that can actually be released without sub-time during time to actually support some of the schools to do some of the work. I do think that we are under conversation right now on how we want to sustain and expand on the group. And I think your point is well-taken that we need, as we do that, we need to include more classroom teachers.
And just, and I'm glad to hear that. And I kind of come at this with two ones. One is that I think that what classroom teachers contribute to the conversation from the data experiences is very important. And I also think that the classroom teachers can bring directly to students is important. So, I mean, it cuts both.
Yeah, agreed, agreed.
I think, yeah, we agree. And I think that the Equity Fellows cohort, I mean, I had no idea how it was going to shape up this first time out. I didn't know who would apply, and I think we've learned a lot from that process.
But I recognize that two other people...
Yeah, there are a lot of interesting, right? MSCR is represented, you've got an AP. I mean, this is a real mix of perspectives, I think, and roles in a district where we do have a lot of teachers, but we also have a lot of people who play other roles too. So, yeah.
And it is sort of interesting when the group gets together how, you know, we bring what we know, but we also try to suspend that idea of role or role authority or any of those things when we come together. And a lot of, a lot of the folks have some deep personal experiences that have brought them to the table.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
Yeah. All right, we'll continue to move. We have quite a bit in front of us, so let's continue to move here. Next item on the agenda is consent items. And I'll move that the Board of Education adopt and approve all the motions set forth in Section C of the Electronic Agenda prepared for the January 29, 2018 Regular School Board Meeting, exactly as said motions are written. Now, by voting affirmatively on the motions, a board member expresses his or her affirmative vote on each of the motions consolidated hereby, subject to any express separations that have been made by any member of the school board. I guess it's been moved in second. Okay. Nikki.
I move to separate 6.12.
6.12, okay.
6.15 and 6.16.
Can you give mine?
Yes. Any others? Okay. I didn't think there'd be many laughs tonight. Any others?
Play me this time.
All right, okay. So, it's been moved in second. Morton, your advisory vote, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kate, what is it, an aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries seven zero. Okay, we'll try to go in order, I think if I have them correctly. So, the first one will be Anna at 6.3.
Okay, thank you. So, I just want to pull 6.3 just for a little bit of further discussion. 6.3 is around shortened day agreements. I just wanted to express that I continue to have concerns about students being on a shortened day schedule, especially if they're doing a shortened day so that they can receive therapy outside of the school. I think it has a negative impact on their education because they're losing that instructional time, and we don't have a plan in place to recoup that time. So, the students that are on shortened days aren't falling farther behind. I also want to share my concern of just the work that I do in my, my day job, that I do have concerns around students being placed on shortened day agreements that are being asked to be on a shortened day because they have behavioral challenges. And so, kids and families are being persuaded to do a shortened day. And so, I just want us to continue to look at that and make sure that we're striving to get every, every child that wants to be on a full-day program to have a full-day program. And just really look at what are the outcomes for our students that are currently on shortened day programs.
Yeah, James, can I respond to that?
Sure.
And I just want to agree with you wholeheartedly. We've been having a fairly thorough discussion about shortened day agreements ourselves, and I just want to echo your sentiments. I think it's incredibly important.
Any other questions or comments on 6.3? Seeing none, then I'll move that the Board of Education approve request for shortened day agreements for two students.
Second.
Been moved in second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Morton, your advisory vote, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, motion carries seven zero. Okay, next item is 6.8. Dean.
Thanks. I strongly believe that...
Do you just remind them? Mike?
I strongly believe that having community partners is a huge benefit to our students. And by bringing in partners that can address a particular need that we're not doing so good at. So, I guess one of the questions I have about the Omega contract is why does it happen in the middle of the year?
Yeah, so just to be clear, there is a two-year MOA with Omega, and then the MOA needs a service agreement every year to expend the funds. The service agreement was done for the 1617 school year in September of 2016. We got the invoice mid-year, and the contract manager just realized that there was no service agreement implementing the MOA for 1718, so we couldn't pay the invoice. So, this is just the formal record-keeping to implement the MOA that has been in place for two years and to make sure that the cash, not cash, the financial transactions can occur to carry out that two-year MOA. So, it is a July 1, 17... No, it will have to happen every year. It just needs to be made.
Can't we next year just bring them together instead of doing them staggered like this? I mean, it's just a convenience thing, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, so I, we can. I'm not actually sure why it was a one-year. I know there were some tweaks and to see how the one-year went, but this literally is just like the financial transaction so that Omega can get paid for this school year.
If, if, if my memory serves me correctly, Jessica was here earlier, and I don't think she's here any longer. But if my memory serves me correctly, the current structure of the contract is based on students served and hours and things like that. And so, the invoices can't happen until those numbers have been produced. And I think that that, and therefore, the amount of payment can't happen. So, so maybe, maybe that's why this is happening in this kind of convoluted fashion. Maybe not, I don't know. That's my memory.
It's annual approval to expend the funds of greater than $20,000. And so, that is what we're in, is the technical board approval to expend the funds of greater than $20,000. It is not a mid-year contract. It's a July 1, 17 to June 30 of 18, and we are working to make sure that contract managers are tickling out their contracts appropriately.
Well, I'd appreciate it if you could combine these so that things are done at one time instead of two. I just think that makes sense.
Okay, Anna?
I want to agree with what Dean has to say around keeping the contract. I mean, I know that's not a question, but I would like to say that the services that Omega School provides students is necessary because there are definitely barriers around instructional time that wouldn't really work with like our conventional school day. And for some of our students, they really do require more one-on-one instruction, more support across the day. And so, I do think it's of value to be partnering with organizations that can provide those services. The question I had is what school is the district making? Is there a school?
I didn't know of that.
Okay, okay. And then, and the other thing I would just say is that what I am consistently hearing is that we are narrowing options for our students, especially at the high school level for getting out of the traditional comprehensive high school. We're pulling some of those programs that we've historically had in the district, and I think that's a disadvantage. I'm just, I'm hearing we have few and fewer programs that would meet the needs of non-traditional learners.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, next Monday, we'll be having, I mean, it is an agenda item for the board as part of the Instruction Work Group, is that right, TJ? But we'll be talking about Opportunity Youth, which includes a full look at all of those programs.
All right, thank you. And thanks for raising the concern, Dean. And can take this up with Mr. Berry and make sure that, you know, that this actually happens. Okay. Then I'll move that the Board of Education approve the expenditure for Omega School in the amount of $30,000 for the provision of the High School Equivalency Diploma Program Services using the 2017-18 Capitol High Operating Budget.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any final questions or comments? Morton, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries seven zero. Okay, 6.12.
I was reading this contract, I was reading the rules and the requests on the consent decrees and looking at it, and I believe HR needs furniture. I recommend, understand that and that they redid it. It was the amount of $66,000 on furniture I was a little confused on. I'd just like a little more explanation on that.
So, you want an explanation on the amount? Okay, sure.
I don't know that I am equipped to give you a full explanation on the HR furniture outside of what's on the memo. Mike, do you want to talk about the HR furniture purchase? Thanks, Mike. Appreciate you.
More than anything.
There is a description of, I think, what we're purchasing in the memo. And it is funded by the TID 25, one-time money, which we think is a good use of that money. But I'll let Mike talk about it in more detail.
Right, you might recall, this item came up during the 1718 budget adoption back in the spring. It's so unusual for us to remodel anything at Doyle that it kind of stood out at the time. And HR, you know, there's 2024 FTE, about $1.75 million worth of annual labor working in that space. And poorly ventilated, poorly lit, poorly organized work area. And, and so, we remodeled it, and part of that was furniture. Very functional, simply a productivity issue. It's not about fashion, intended to help those people do their jobs and do them well. And it was all bid, it was a state contract, and we got the best pricing we could get. The area is not just one office, it's a series of offices throughout the HR area.
TJ?
Can you give just a general budget update on it, that there was $220,000 pieces that out of TID 25, one from last year's budget, one from this year's budget? And with this $66,000, where does that put the project budget?
Yeah, the project budget actually went over budget slightly, mostly because of the cost of remodeling a couple of restrooms. Very expensive to remodel restrooms. But the slight overage was covered within the building services budget, and we resolved that several months ago.
But that building services budget is then budget that wasn't used to repair our schools. I mean, that's, I mean, when you say it's covered from building services, that's not, that's a budget that we've really struggled to, to maintain over the years. And so, I just want to say that when you say it's covered, that it's covered by uncovering something else. And I understand, it's not a huge amount.
We can, yes, yes. And, you know, and to your point, this is the HR department, which is a department that has saved millions in benefits and workers' comp and other things. So, yeah, we've had those discussions internally. I thought bottom of mind, it was worth it, and I appreciate your support.
Yeah, and I've had the opportunity to visit the remodeled HR, and it looks great. And I think that we need to have all of our facilities upgraded if we could afford it. I think that we'll work better with better facilities, and I'm happy to see that we got it done. So, we're in the process of upgrading other facilities as well. So, feel good about the work was done. I felt good walking in there, and it was a huge improvement over what we've had in HR. Yes, Nick?
I respect HR. I think they do a great job. But until our schools and our classroom schools have what they need, I just cannot agree with such expenditure, and therefore, I'm voting no.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Just a comment, that if this, if this project had been within budget, I would have voted yes, but since it's over budget and that was not noted in the memo, I will be voting no, because I don't even know how much over budget it was.
Okay. I'll move that the Board of Education approve a purchase in the amount of $66,053.61 from the Staples for Furniture for the Human Resources Department at the Doyle Administration Building with funding from the 2017-18 Tax Incremental District 25 Budget.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any final questions or comments? Seeing none, Morton, your advisory vote.
Nay.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries five, two. Okay, next item on the agenda, 6.15. Mary.
Both 6.15 and 6.16, I would like to rephrase myself. I have no issue with the donation, but I'm on the Board of Great Lakes, so...
All right, thank you. So, I'll move 6.15, that the Board of Education accept a donation in the amount of $28,872 from Great Lakes Higher Education Guarantee Corp. to support more equitable access to academically linked field trips and other experiential learning opportunities connected to the socio-emotional curriculum, the purchase of interpretation equipment to better support communication with all families, and the purchase of culturally and linguistically responsive text for Black Hawk Middle School.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Morton, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries seven zero.
Six, zero, Mary abstained.
I didn't abstain, I just...
Mary.
No, Mary abstained, six, zero.
Six, it's six, zero, one.
Six, zero, yeah.
Yeah, six, zero, one. Okay. Okay, donation from Great Lakes Higher Education Corp. I'll move that the Board of Education accept a donation in the amount of $28,872 to support an upgrade of the bookroom at Gumpers Elementary School, including new books for all grades, headphones, and shelving and storage with funding from a donation from Great Lakes Higher Education Corp.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, Morton, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries six, oh, one. Okay, that concludes all items for the consent agenda tonight. Next item on the agenda is...
Seven, one.
Yeah, seven, one. I'd like to move into seven, one slowly, if it's okay with everyone. Okay, next item is under main item seven, it's item seven, one. And it's the Student Services Equity-Based Resource Distribution Model. And I'm going to call on Jan to get us started.
All right, I appreciate that, James. I'm going to ask John Harper, Lisa Quistad, and Mike Berry to join me. We'd like to share a very short presentation, no slides, I promise, just words, before the discussion and vote. And in this short period of time, we'd like to be attentive to some of the comments that we've heard in the last day or so. Mike, you're back. You should have just stayed up here. Settle in. All right, I'm going to say a couple of words. I'm going to let Lisa kick it off. Go for it, Lisa.
Okay, I'm going to go for it. I'll just start off just with a couple of statements about our conversations over the past...
Lisa, can you pull the mic closer? I think it seems to be closer, closer.
I'll offer a couple...
That's worse. Just pull it closer.
It's got, you got to be almost...
You've got to be almost breathing all over it.
Now you look like a press secretary.
Right, exactly. So I want to offer a couple of statements, truly from the heart of a three-member team here that's worked really hard on this and really wants to make things better for schools and for kids. So, thank you for allowing an opportunity for us to speak. So, I wanted to offer a couple of statements to be really clear about who we are and what we stand for, and how we value giving schools the resources that they need to best serve children. We are about inclusion, we are very serious about not cost-cutting in this work. We are very serious about developing a better and more transparent process and model to support students and getting their needs met. And we are serious about wanting to make things better. In saying that, we believe that those statements are core to what we believe in, and we believe those are not in conflict with the work that we are proposing to have ERS do for us. We want to be sure that we're letting you know, this is not about handing over the keys to someone to consult around our beliefs, or change how we deliver special ed services, or hide everything or cut costs. We hold the keys. We have our values and beliefs about children. And we know, the schools have told us, that how we are allocating resources hasn't worked for them, and we want to be able to make that better. So we feel a responsibility to real children with real needs, and we want to do something that is both stabilizing for schools and also responsive when our students need it the most. So, I want to give John an opportunity and Mike an opportunity to share a little bit. We have been concerned about the tone and some of the language that's been used over the past couple of days around this, and we want to be sure that we clarify up any misconceptions. And want to be sure that we're, we know that we're not asking someone to work with us to tell us how to do special education. We're really asking someone to work with us around developing the data and the tools to help us give schools exactly what they need.
Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify the purpose, the scope, and any lingering questions you may have about the proposed development of a student services equity-based resource distribution model. So, while we have an existing process, you're very well aware of our annual process, I just want to say that I'm very committed to improving that. We know that there are limitations to our, the current model, and you experienced some of the difficulties we had with that in the fall, and, you know, just want to make sure that we're moving in a direction that is aligned with our longer-term goals and vision of this special education plan. We're seeking a partner to help us develop an equity-based resource distribution process and model, and, which is aligned to our beliefs and values, designed to ensure our procedural compliance, accelerate the learning of our students with disabilities, and improve the socio-emotional learning, and close opportunities gaps. So, I, I'll state too, just personally, like, I've had the great fortune of, of being influenced by and being mentored by Lee Greenwald, Jack Jorgensen, and Ann Yaley, and I fully intend to carry on the legacy of the work that they've done. They were my predecessors in this role. And we have a history of being pioneering in the efforts in the area of special education, and particularly inclusive education, and this, this belief in our students and included in integrated environments is absolutely where our heart is and where we want to lead next. The outcomes that we're striving for this is to evaluate the strengths and limitations of our current system, the way we operate, and to assist the district in determining a new model which helps us understand and allocate resources at appropriate levels, both at a district level and then at a school-based level for special education and related services. Secondly, we're seeking the same type of guidance in, in determining appropriate levels of student services personnel, again, at a district level and at a school-based level to implement our behavior education plan. The selection process was lengthy and fairly elongated and thorough, we think. So, using the bid-net process, we released an RFP, Request for Proposal. We had six entities or vendors reply to that, and after evaluating the, each of the vendors, we, we really honed in on four, the top four. There were two, two vendors that really failed to answer significant portions of the RFP, and essentially by those, those emissions that excluded them from, from consideration. We checked references of these top candidates, and as I wrote in the memo, all of the references checks were really positive. So, it wasn't as though that really helped us narrow down to, to really hone in on who would be the finalist. So we conducted additional phone or Skype interviews with each of the top four candidates. We reviewed work products, and then last week, we completed a fairly thorough electronic background check of what we, of the finalist, in this case, ERS. So, our, there's a question here, do I...
Do you need a clarifying question at this point?
No, I just, when he's finished.
Okay, appreciate it.
I was just notifying.
All right, so actually, that, that really concludes my, my synthesis here. Like, I've, you know, we've had already an initial conversation around this, and briefings and so forth, and just be open to any questions you have regarding process or any of the other additional questions you have.
Okay, anything else from administration or staff here?
Yeah, I just want to make one last comment, if that's all right, Nikki. And I, I think, I just want to reiterate what the team said about the challenges we've faced in this area. We are not asking for a consultant to help us analyze how services are delivered in special ed, to help us rewrite our special education plan. This is about a process and model on resource allocation, and, which is different. I think those, those things have gotten conflated, basically, on what I've been seeing and hearing.
Could you define resource? What, resource is pretty broad, so when you say resource allocation, what does that really mean?
We're really talking about the positions that we allocate to schools. We've talked a lot about the fact that we have been in a more, I hope this is fair to say, reactive mode, as opposed to proactive mode, which is some of the criticism that we've heard from the Board and, and we, we share. And, and we, I mean, I visit schools, as you know, pretty much a couple times a week and talk to staff, and this is the most recurring theme of any across the years, asking for us to have a way of allocating resources that aren't, that isn't just about numbers. I know that our model now is a little more nuanced than that, but moves beyond numbers, but is much more sensitive to the actual needs of, of real individual children. And so that's what we're trying to figure out. This is, we have wonderful people, including John on staff, who know a ton about special education, and a lot of local people here who can help continue to advise us on how to provide special ed services well. But we, we lack sufficient knowledge and skill, we hope to build more of it over time, in how to create a more sensitive model for allocating mainly positions, but that has probably something to do with time, and I, so I, I'm asking the Board to, to let us move forward with this work. Like I said, it is one of the most recurring challenges that we've faced. We keep bumping up against this problem, and we, we want permission to move ahead. I think that John, I want to thank him and the RFP team, who have, I think, gone through an especially strong and thorough process, because there have been so many concerns about which vendor or partner we might use. We've been cognizant of that from the very beginning, which is why we've tried to be as thorough as we have. And as some of you have mentioned, I mean, we are talking about some of the most vulnerable students in our district. This is not just about special ed, it's about all of student services, which includes the resources that we give, which is no small thing to the behavior education plan. And I, I, we think that moving forward with this work, that it's about better allocating resources to support the students who need it most in our district, we're just asking permission to move ahead.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Fannie Miller?
Is it commonplace during RFPs to often have back and forth with different groups and that?
I'm not sure what I, what you mean.
I'm talking about an email that was sent at 3:17:25 last night, I mean, yesterday afternoon, to Joanne Yankee and Madison Partners on how she should reconsider her views on, on ERS, and that she might be confused or mistaken, and I just want to know if that's standard practice or not, because I have the email with me.
So, I think John responded to, John, explain.
Sure, I responded to her communication yesterday, and I believe it needed to have additional clarification. There's nothing there that's secret, nothing there that's inappropriate. In fact, it's much of the same language that was in the Board memo, which is public domain. So, I don't, I'm not sure if you have any further questions.
I just wanted to ask procedurally.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything wrong responding to a member of the public about their concerns or questions regarding a public item that the Board is voting on.
She sent it out to the Madison Partners for Inclusive Education, of which I'm a, I'm on the list, sir. So, I can then respond, I respond to situations where families indicate an area of concern, something that I can specifically address. So I, I can't say I do that frequently, but I do, I have done that multiple times in the past.
Thank you, appreciate that. It was more procedural than anything, it wasn't meant as an insult, but a procedural.
Sure, other questions? Ms. Merkis?
And let me ask how you would like, I've got a couple of questions and then a couple of statements I'd like to make, and would you like me to, I mean, ask questions and then see if other people have things to say and come back to the statements, or do it all at once? It's, I just want to ask what you'd prefer as chair.
Okay, you had others?
I have several questions and...
Okay, so what I'd like to do is when you had a floor, to go ahead and be done. So, let's let Nikki finish her.
No problem. Just whatever you prefer.
Yeah, then we'll go to TJ.
I understand and respect the Board's work. Pardon me for looking at notes, but I need to do that. But there are some problems that I have with ERS that I think need to be made public. One, I worry about their lack of accountability in special ed. I worry about their work in Oakland, I worry about their work in Cincinnati. And I know, I know that experience tells us that actions speak louder than words, and that repeated actions, you can tend to predict behavior based on past events. I worry about that. I do worry about cuts in special education, because immediately after this, in the briefing, we discussed how we're putting possible caps on several special ed programs, such as LEAP and NEON. I worry about how that is not considered a cut to special education. But the thing that bothered me the most was a piece of material, TJ found it, but I'm willing to respond to it. And yes, it's from 2010, but are we really willing to partner, and I, trigger warning to anyone who's disabled, but are we really willing to partner with someone who uses the term mentally retarded to discuss our students? I'm sorry, it was a full month and a half after the federal law changed. It was after disability rights groups had stopped using the term for years. These are our most vulnerable students and are most important, and I really want to know if this is the best for, to make every child successful in community, career, and college-ready. Thank you.
Okay, before we move on, is there any administrative comments to Nikki's comments? Anyone have any comments?
Do you want to comment on just the language used there? I mean, I guess I would say that...
Well, is there anything that you feel you need to respond to?
Yeah, I mean, the, the term mental retardation was a part of the statute. I mean, that was statutory language, that was, yes, it's now seems archaic, but not that long ago, that was a very common term. And that was, with the, the statement that you read was actually linked to national, like, at the federal level, you know, they referred to mental retardation specifically. And I think if they were to do it now, they would probably regret that, but that was the term at the time.
Then why didn't they list the statute number?
Okay, any other administrative comments at this point? Okay, yeah, you, you've concluded, Nikki?
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Merkis?
And which would you prefer?
Just go for it for now.
Okay, go for it. Then I want to actually start out with a couple of quick, very short statements, and the short, first one is that, as I communicated individually to Lisa, but also to Mike and John, who are part of this team, that though I oppose your recommendation, I have respect for the work you've done and the effort you've put into it and the sincerity of it. And the second one is that this is not the apocalypse, that this is, number one, $100,000, which is not a huge amount of money. Number two is, as Lisa and John have, have made very clear, that these people, we are not turning over the keys, that due to federal laws, federal laws that ERS is on record as opposing, but federal laws nonetheless, the damage, that cuts are not part of the picture because maintenance of effort laws and things like that. This is not the apocalypse, these people are not going to destroy our district. However, I do think that, that they can do subtle damage, and more importantly, I think that they can distract and delay a genuine opportunity to address issues that I think are, need to be addressed in our district. And so those are kind of the first two statements to begin with. And then I have a question, which also kind of leads into other things, but, but the superintendent said that I think we're conflating service delivery models with allocation models, and I think they belong conflated. I believe that they, that they are interdependent with each other, and that, that what our service, what, and even the superintendent then continued by saying that we need to talk about the experiences of, of the students and be responsive to, to what's going on in the schools, and that's service delivery. And so I think that they are conflated, and one of the things is that, as I was thinking about this today, I went back and looked at the recent update we had on the special education plan, and what it has to say about what's going on with the service delivery improvement portion of that plan is pretty, there's not a lot there. I mean, it says that you implemented a collaborative service delivery planning process. And so I guess that, that one of the things I wanted to do is kind of get a sense from you and Lisa, and to the extent that Mike's involved, an update on how did that process go? Did it include all the schools? Is there, were there lessons learned? What will it look like next year? Where are we at in that portion of the special education plan? So, and again, brief, because I don't, I don't want to stretch this out, but just kind of some sense of that.
I'll take them in kind of like reverse order.
And I emailed this question earlier, so I'm not just throwing it at you right now.
So, all schools have completed the service delivery process for students with disabilities. It's actually really important to do that in the beginning of the year, because there's a high relationship between the service delivery process, staff, and student schedules, right? So there, so the one, the service delivery process, number one, is, is developed to help identify professional learning goals, help develop priorities, also to map out all services that, all student-based services, whether that's speech and language services, OT, PT, specially-designed services, and in what environment. So we use that as the stepping stone to cross-reference with the staffing schedule so that the two are meshed together. I, I don't disagree at all. Of course, the service delivery and the distribute, the resource are conflated, they're, they're very much related, however, they're not exactly the same, and, you know, they actually don't take place at the same time. And I think longer term, maybe a goal of ours would be to more greatly sync these two things because of the high relationship between the two. So, I think you're, you're touching on where we'd like to be in the future in terms of using the service delivery to kind of inform resources, but that's, we, actually, I'm, I'm not exactly sure how to do that yet. And so that's an aspect of this project, that I would love to have more, a different set of eyes, a different perspective, and to gain a greater, gain a greater understanding of how to do just that. Because I think long... Because I think long-term, that's where we'd love to be.
You know, it's funny, I emailed Lisa last week something along the lines of, I think we are in agreement on a lot of things. And what you just said, I, I think we're in complete agreement on. And, and I think that that is, and that kind of speaks to, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep this short. But the first thing I want to talk about is that I think that, um, there's two pieces that I want to speak to. One is why I don't think the work is, is being defined correctly either in the RFP or in the response. And part of it is that I don't think it moves us there. I think that, um, if we want to talk about allocations, that it has to start from the bottom up and it has to start with service delivery. And, uh, and, and, and that's not defined by data in the traditional sense. That's defined by things, you know, I, I think in my communications with special educators this weekend and parents this weekend, and communications that actually, um, were about, um, kids unmet toilet needs. There were communications about, um, staff and student safety around concussions and concussion protocols. Um, these are the communications I had, and that is not the kind of thing that can be captured with a top-down data-driven approach, a comparative approach with other districts, which is the claimed area of expertise for, um, education resource strategies. And so, you know, I wish that the RFP had been written differently so that, that, so that that interdependence was more, was more central to the, to the RFP. And I wish that the responses had been better, um, would, would have shown a better, a higher awareness or in the case that the one that did show that awareness completed the entire application, which they did not. But I think that, that rather than go down the other, um, the road of people I don't think will help, which will be a distraction and will delay it, I would rather wait and, and, and pursue that vision. The second piece has to do with, you know, who ERS is. And at the beginning of this, I decided I wasn't going to talk about their ideology and their work on behalf of, um, policies and practices that I think are very, very destructive. Um, but I will talk about their expertise, and they have no demonstrated expertise in this, none. I mean, they, they just don't. They have generalized resource allocation expertise, but when it comes to special education, assessing needs, you know, they are essentially that, that, um, looking at, you know, you look at how Cleveland's formula does, and it, and it, and it's, it's cruder than our formula for, for, for students per needs. And Cleveland is their shining district. Um, they don't have it. If you look at the advice they gave Oakland, it's, it, it is, you have a bunch of choices for how you do this. Well, we knew that. I mean, and, and, and so I don't see a particular expertise in, in this area. And secondly, I don't see them as an organization, this isn't about ideology, this is about integrity. I don't see them as an organization with integrity. Um, and I'm going to call two examples from Oakland. One of which is that the very same time that they are consulting with Oakland on the Oakland School District budget, which has been severely negatively impacted by the fact that approximately fifty percent of the students in Oakland now go to charter schools, they are on the public payroll doing this. They are simultaneously on the payroll of a charter advocacy group, advising how to move more dollars in kids to charter schools. The same exact team is in Oakland doing this. These are people I don't want coming to my house. Um, I'm going to leave it at that.
All right, thank you. Uh, do administrative have anything they want to comment at this point? Okay, okay, Anna?
Thank you. Um, I just had one thought, and I guess we talk about this a lot in education. We have these ideas around equity versus adequacy. And we spend a lot of time, I find, talking about equity, um, that we distribute things in an equitable manner. Um, we don't talk so much about adequacy and whether the amount we have is adequate. And so I, I, I get concerned when I hear discussions about equity without talking about adequacy because you could equitably distribute resources that are inadequate, and it would still be inadequate, inequitable, and ineffective for our students. And so with that statement, I, I wanted to find out how the team came up with the answer that, or this is my question, how did we assess whether it's a lack of skills that is putting us in a reactive mode around resource allocation versus it's a lack of adequate resources to begin with?
I actually think that part of the RFP is to answer that question. I mean, we provide, we give out and we allocate all of the resources that we have. And actually, I think you, I pointed this out earlier. I think one time you said, like, do you know you have enough? Do you know if you have enough? And actually, I was probably stammering because I don't know if I had a really elegant answer for that. And so that's actually part of this, this RFP is to, number one, analyze, like, are we spending enough? I mean, I think so, but I don't know for sure. And secondly, how do we allocate in an equitable fashion to schools, to each school? I mean, those are the two really big questions in terms of, of the special education and student services aspect. But those are, like, they're, it's, yeah, I mean, that's the heart of the, of the, the whole RFP. It may have been better and may have now, in hindsight, as you said that, to really say it as clearly as you did, adequacy and equity. I mean, and, but that's, when I reread the RFP descriptively, that's what you come away with. And we certainly have time when we actually meet with whatever, you know, with ERS or the entity, if it's approved, to go down that route. I mean, that's, that's really like what we're trying to figure out here.
All right, thank you, Anna. So just my follow-up comment, though, and I, and I do share concerns that other groups and other folks have shared today that when you contract out with an organization that historically says less is adequate, that, that is concerning to me. Can I actually say just one quick thing on that?
Commendational response.
Anna, yeah, I, I know that in the follow-up interviews that Lisa, John, and the team held, the, there were some very pointed and probing questions about this issue of cost cutting. Um, because that isn't what we, we put in the RFP. That is not our intent. I, I just, I want to point that out because I think that is so important, Anna. We, yeah, that is, that's not the intent of the work. Um, and we wanted to make sure that the, the possible vendors that we might select understood that very clearly from the beginning.
Well, actually, John.
Yeah, go ahead.
I asked that question in the interview.
Yeah.
And they came back to me, like, later on in the interview, and they said, Lisa, we want to come back to you about that cost cutting. Is that really what you want us for? Because that's not what we read in the RFP. And if that's what you want, you know, like, we got to rethink this. So they actually really took that to heart and circled back to us on the interview team when we asked that.
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Longus.
Yeah, thanks. Um, I hope there's a question in, in what I'm going to say. I have some thoughts, and I don't even know if it's a statement. First thing is I, I appreciate when staff actually, uh, email responses back that the board gets. Uh, because when they, when they don't, uh, you never know if that person ever gets their question answered. Plus, there's sometimes, there's questions that I don't know the answer to either. So procedurally, I think it's a good way to do that. And I know it's been done in the past, and I always appreciate when that's done. So, uh, I think it's a good thing that people weigh in as soon as they can with the, when, when we get emails about people asking questions. As, uh, this project is, uh, ever since I've been on the board, I've been asking you and mostly you.
Yeah.
Are we doing this right? And what, what I know is that we have a low, uh, staff to student ratio, that is lower than most of everything in a state, from what I, from what I recall. It's the lowest one in the state, the ratio, right? So, uh, so, so that's good. However, we don't all feel that it's right yet. So, uh, and we're trying to figure out what's right, and it's been very difficult. So what we don't, what we know it doesn't work is anecdotes from, uh, Anna, who I think left, left the school district after ten years, and we get anecdotes like that all the time. And with, uh, the best student to staff ratio in the entire state. So where we place all these folks at, and we always, then we're, it's a whack-a-mole. Problem happens, and then we're sending stuff over in reaction all the time, and we're not proactive, like you said earlier. And, and it's time for us to, to try to get ahead of that and flip that. And, and that's what I want to do. Now, uh, I know, uh, that if this group comes back and, and suggests some of the, uh, recommendations they made in other school districts, we're going to turn it right back to them and say, uh, no. That's, that's not what we're hiring you for. It's not what we're, what we want from you to do. And we're not paying you until you do, do what, uh, we ask you to do here. And that's help us figure out the best way to, to be proactive and not reactive. So my, and I, I want someone to come in and, and help us with this because we don't seem to be able to figure it out ourselves. Not that, that you're, you're incapable of it, but it's just complicated. So having someone come in that's just going to focus on it and say, this is what we're going to do. This is what we want you to do. Give us information on the best way to do this. And, uh, then we'll take it from there. And it better not be cutting staff or cut thing, and we already, they already confirmed that that's not what, what their goal is here. If it is, we're just not going to listen to it, and it's not going to be what, what we know will work here. So I mentioned last Monday, and I'm probably going to keep doing this, is that, that, uh, I don't think we're risky enough, and I want to take some risks. I want some information. I want some information from groups like this and others. And I'll decide if it works all right or not. I'll listen to you guys, and we'll decide, once we get this report, if this thing was something like they're trying to do at Oakland or, or, or not as good as what we were looking for, and then we'll say we'll reject it. But I want, well, this is an attempt for us to get at the, this problem and resolve it. And that's what I want to see. And if this, we, we talked to these guys more lengthy than any, in any other RFP than I can recall. Well, they understand our concerns about some of the previous work that they did and how that's not going to fly here. And, and, uh, so if this is where we're at, I'm okay to, to take a risk on these guys, knowing full well what, what their past history was and also knowing that what we want from them, and we're going to hold them to that. And I think the last thing I want to say is that the, uh, the people that sent us, uh, emails with concerns about their children perhaps losing services is not going to happen. That is just not going to happen. There's no way that this board or our school district will ever do that. What we're trying to do is make sure that every child that comes here gets exactly what they need at the appropriate time. And I know that that's weak. It's not good enough yet, and, and that's what I'm trying to get at here. So I'm, if this is, after all the scrutiny that we gave this, knowing what we know about some of the past work of these guys, knowing that that's not going to fly here, I think I'm okay with this.
All right, thank you, Ms. Longus. Uh, Ms. Merk?
Well, I, I don't think I could say it better than Dean did. I, I really think that we are hearing from our staff that they need help in doing better. And to turn a deaf ear towards that, um, I think wouldn't be doing our jobs. And so I'm not going to get into whether ERS is, um, the best firm to do this or not do this. We need additional expertise. And they went through the process. Um, of course, I'm sure ERS has, um, been hired by school districts to cut costs. Not all school districts have the resources that Madison has. So have they done work around? I'm sure they have. That's what they were probably hired to do. But we're not hiring them to do that. Um, and so I, I just think we have to support the administration. And as Dean says, hey, this isn't, this isn't our court to make the decisions. But we should not be afraid of more knowledge and expertise. And it's for us to make the decisions on doing that. But there is a lot at stake. This is about children's lives. And I think we have to, we have to be, uh, mindful of looking and finding, um, and learning to see if there are better ways to meet those needs, not cheaper ways, better ways. And we know right now we are reactive too often. And when we're reactive, those are to people who are, who have reached the breaking point of screaming and right when it hits the board level. How many cases are those where needs aren't being met, but we just haven't heard about it? And I believe we need to give our administration the tools to at least learn and see if there's better ways. So thank you, Dean. That's, I couldn't agree more.
Okay, so, um, I'm going to call on, and see if Kate has anything she'd like to add at this point before we go for seconds and final time around. Kate, do you have any, uh, input or anything you'd like to add?
Yeah, thank, thank you, James. Um, look, I agree with a lot of what Mary and Dean have just, uh, shared. Um, we have heard numerous times about, uh, from every stakeholder in the district, from students, from staff, um, from families about the inadequacy of some of our resourcing. And I am certainly open to hearing, um, information that we, uh, as a group can make choices about how to interpret. Um, maybe the only one piece to add, for me, the most exciting piece of this is actually around the behavior education resources. Um, this is a challenge that I think we've heard, uh, even tonight, we heard from some of our speakers about. And, um, I, I think we need to hear some new, uh, thoughts on how to approach behavior in our schools. Um, and so for me, this, this actually, probably the more important piece of this, uh, request from our administration is to understand how we might invest in resources that genuinely positively affect, uh, student, student health and behavioral outcomes, uh, in our schools. So maybe just to, to throw that out there, for me, I guess in terms of the process here, the details matter. What comes back from this group, uh, I'm, I'm a little bit skeptical about consultants. Um, so what comes back has to represent in a very detailed way our, um, school-based realities. So I, I expect that our staff will be able to look at what we get back and say, yes, that is representative of what is going on in our schools. And, um, uh, and the same thing for families. Uh, so, you know, I don't, I don't expect this will be a top-down kind of, uh, numbers exercise. I expect this to reflect the realities of our schools and, and to reflect our values, so.
Okay, uh, thank you, Kate. Uh, Morton?
I just want to say before I start, uh.
Mike?
The, as is, oh, sorry. Oh, it is on. Um, but as a student, a hundred thousand dollars is quite a bit. Um, that's pretty daunting for my.
As a non-student, it's quite a bit.
Yeah, um, but, um, so I guess I am coming into this with a lot of skepticism. Um, but Laura did share with me, um, some of what Mr. Merk's, um, shared and some of the articles that he, he posted. And, um, there was one from Cleveland dot com that said that, um, from the Cleveland School District, um, its report card, um, with most of the gains that the district made, they were so small that they were not even considered statistically significant, um, in terms of test scores. So when evaluating ERS, is that of any concern? Because I know numbers aren't always the whole story, but, um, I mean, test scores are test scores, and they will be looked at by schools, universities, employers.
Okay, thank you.
I think I have the context there. It was that ERS reported that gains had been made in X number of areas. And did that report that, um, these gains were not statistically significant? And to me, that's bad consulting.
Okay, Nikki?
I have a few financial questions for my fair. How much, um, how much would a hundred thousand dollars, how many SEAs would that fund, just to raise?
So, uh, we use, uh, about forty thousand dollars as the cost of, uh, of an SEA on average. And just in terms of the overall context, in student services, we have about one thousand one hundred and fifty FTE and about, about a eighty-seven million dollar a year annual budget. So certainly a hundred thousand dollars is significant, not just to students. Finding that right balance between growing and steering is something that we try to do all the time. And, uh, no more steering than necessary, but some is necessary.
Uh, just one other financial, if you, if I may, and that. Just one other financial, if, if I may, and that is, how many schools this year requested additional SEAs due to behavior issues?
I don't know if we've quantified it by specifically around behavior issues. I think that that's a, we've, we've made probably thirty-seven allocation adjustments to schools across, since the beginning of the year.
And.
But I can't say they're all around behavior. I mean, they're for students who move in, they're for students who need additional support, students who transfer from one school to another. They're made for a myriad of reasons, some of which could be behavior, but that's, that's not the norm, that's clear, that's the exception and not the.
And hiring a consultant would this increase or decrease the number of SEAs that could be done?
Remember, we're using two twenty-five dollars. It's actually like separate.
We have our one-time funds.
Yeah.
In order for the numbers to work out, I need to see it, so.
Yeah, it won't have an impact.
Okay, TJ? I'm sorry, are you done, Nick?
Yes.
I'm going to be really brief. First off, I want to thank Anna for, for clarifying that around adequacy and equity, and that I thought that was very important. And I just want to clarify it further and echo it, because immediately the conversation went to these people aren't cutting. And what Anna asked about was if these people would recognize unmet needs that require increases.
Yeah, I understand that.
And, and I share her concerns that these people's track record is, is not to recognize those needs. And so I'm not sure if they can. Secondly, I want to speak to one of things Dean said, Dean said, you know, that if people are cutting services, that's not happening in our district. Well, families are fighting for services, everyday services that are required in their IEP, services to get those services in their IEP. Staff are fighting for their students every day for unmet needs and unmet services, so when we say that's not going to happen in our district, it's happening every day, and it's happening multiple places every day. And that's, and, and I think Mary echoed, Mary showed a recognition of that in some of the things Mary said about them. And if you don't, you know, if you, and to me, that's the sort of place where we have to start with the experiences and outcomes for our students and staff in our buildings, and not start from crunching numbers. I've made that point already. The last thing I want to speak to is, is one of the things Mary said, is that, you know, that this comes down to how we define what the needs are and what, and what's there. And I understand that our senior staff has recommended this and defined the needs in one way, but if you think the needs require a carpenter, you know, hire a shoemaker. And ERS's experience is in shoemaking, and we need a carpenter. So I'm not sure why we're doing that.
Okay, Anna?
So I, I would like to agree with Morton as well. I actually do think a hundred thousand dollars is a significant amount of money, and if I felt that amount of money was worth, the expense was worth the expertise, I would support it, but I haven't seen in that RFP or the response where we're seeing the expertise around resource allocation specifically in regard to special education services. My other concern is that in, in the three years I've been in the board, we've approved a number of requests to work with consultants, and in my opinion, what we've received from the consultants has not been helpful. It many times has really been common sense things that we've been hearing from our staff and our families over and over, and so to spend a hundred thousand dollars on something that I think will, at best, do, replicate that, at worst, maybe do some damage, that I'm not in support of the contract, but I will be very pleasantly surprised if we, if it does move forward and we do get some valuable data and information that's helpful for our students, and that will help me reconsider moving forward how often we're working with outside consultants.
Okay, Superintendent?
All right, one last comment, and then I'll pass it back to you, James, because I know you're probably eager to get this to a vote. On consultant use in general, it's interesting. I think we've had some great experiences with consultants, and you're right, I would agree, that some of our external evaluations have given us some common sense feedback, right? Kind of reflecting some of the things, confirming some of the things that we already know, which often has, happens in my experience with evaluations. I don't say that to be defensive, but we agreed as a, as a team, that the, the three big plans we would put on these three-year evaluation cycles, and I think it's been in those circumstances, just to be quite honest, the Advanced Learner Plan, Special Ed Plan, maybe when the ELL Plan comes back around, which is up next, that we get an external point of view, right? To validate, disagree, confirm, or not, what we think is, is happening in our district. So I, I want, I don't think we have to have that conversation tonight, but I'd like to have it with you more, because if we don't think those three-year evaluations and the, the going to an external evaluator is giving us new information, better information that drives our performance, then we should reconsider doing it, because you're right, it is expensive. So I'll just say that, I think that's important. James, we offered you some language, if you want to use it, knowing that the board might like to have some assurances about the quality of the work, that this isn't about just more or less or cost-cutting or not, but adequacy of resources for our students. I'll just alert you to the fact that you have that language, if you'd like to build that into the motion.
Appreciate being alerted, sometimes things could, could buy you. And so we've had a lot of input, and I do think it's time to, we've had quite a bit of input. Couple of days of a thousand or so emails that I'm sure board members read, and so we've gotten quite a bit of input on this topic, so a lot to consider, and I'm sure board members have considered all the information. So I do think it's time to bring it to a close at this moment. So I'll move that the Board of Education approve a services contract with Education Resource Strategies, ERS, in the amount not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars for equity-based resource distribution models for Student Services personnel with funding from twenty seventeen nineteen TID twenty-five project funds, one-time funds. And further move that the Board direct the administration to work closely with ERS to ensure that their work be conducted in a manner that is in alignment with the district's deep commitment to inclusive education. A service delivery model that the district continues to improve in order to ensure that all students with a disability have their individual needs met through adequate funding and sufficient staffing. It's been moved and seconded. Morton, your advisory vote, please.
I'm sorry, may I abstain?
You may abstain if you desire to do so. All in favor, say aye, please. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four, three.
Thanks, Mr.
And that concludes that item on the agenda. So, pardon?
That's okay.
Do, do we need a recess? I'm afraid to take a recess. You go ahead, no, go ahead.
Check stuff in your quarter.
Yeah.
It's just my report.
I mean, that's not.
Did you write that, Mary?
Okay, we'll take four minutes at this point.
Chad, no staff. No staff. We already have them there.
Had a slight break. If the audience could come down, please. Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is Instruction Work Group. Mr. Merks.
The Instruction Work Group met on January 8th. We had a deep and I hope productive discussion of the goals and metrics for the next strategic framework. This is a continuing conversation that is taking place in not only at board meetings and committee meetings and retreats, but also in venues and schools and community spots all around the city. And I strongly encourage people to pay attention to it and participate in it because it will be setting the direction of our district for the next five years in very, very important ways. And we had a very brief discussion of the RFP for the Student Services Allocation Model, which at that time there we did not have the recommendation. The date and possible agenda items for the next Instruction Work Group are February 5th. We will have an update on the Opportunity Youth/At-Risk Project and a continuing discussion on the goals and metrics, core values of the strategic framework. As I said, that is an ongoing conversation. And finally, I'd also like to alert that immediately after the Instruction Work Group on February 5th, there will be a meeting to discuss a donation and matching district funds around an athletic facility project at East High School, which I don't believe has been noticed yet, but that will be immediately after the February 5th Instruction Work Group, or at 6 o'clock, whichever comes first.
All right. Thank you. That concludes Instruction Work Group report. Next item on the agenda, Operations Work Group. Ms. Merk.
Operations Work Group meeting was held on January 22nd, and we had one agenda item, really, and that was the 2018-19 Budget Development, which was a high-level overview and look at the revenue projections and key expense areas and how that might be broken out. And this really starts a long process that will continue through the final budget development. So, the next meeting is February 19th, and once again, we will have the 2018-19 Budget Development. This will be focused on staffing and priority actions. The second item on the agenda is the Employee Handbook Update, and the third is Land Attachments/Detachments.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Merk. Next item on the agenda, Other Reports to the Board. And first report is City of Madison Education Committee.
Yes, we did not have a quorum. Next meeting is in February.
Thank you, Ms. Vandermeulen. And we'll continue on. Student Senate. Morton.
So, election preparation and candidacy is beginning to start up, so any new candidates will be receiving their election materials soon, and the election will be taking place in April or May, somewhere around there. We have been focusing a little bit on Board of Education issues, such as the strategic framework, budget priorities, and in addition, recently addressed the dress code via a letter submitted by the Teal Ribbon Club from Memorial. And since recruitment has been kind of rough this year, we're going to examine the Federated Student Senate concept where we can robustly recruit representatives from across the district. In addition, we're looking at MAC Scholars and how that program can be, or possibly be, extended into the entire district. And we're researching advanced learning. We did touch on the Thirst Project, which we might be able to support. And in addition, the Wellness Policy Review and Human Growth and Development Representation.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Morton? Seeing none. We'll continue on. Next item on the agenda, Madison School Community Recreation and MSCR Advisory Committee. Mr. Loomis.
Yeah, thanks. I met with them, their committee, and one of the things that we discussed was trying to increase community participation in their advisory committee. So, there were ideas about particularly reaching out to diverse communities and perhaps having meetings at different places where others could more easily attend. So, that's one of the areas that I think the advisory committee really needs to work on. There'll be another meeting every two months, their meeting, and I'd also like to request that Jacob be asked to come and give us a presentation, perhaps, before, over the summer, before school starts. I think that would be a good time for him to lay out the program for the next school year, and I don't think the school board's heard from someone from MSCR in a long time. So, let's try to get that on our agenda.
Thank you. Okay. Education Resource Officers.
All right. We met last week, and we brought in all the restorative justice programs that are operating in our school districts, some internal and others are community partners. How it fits in with the ERO was historically, an ERO who we kept, when I got on the board, I kept hearing about this guy, actually started the restorative justice programs, and over time, there seemed to be a diminished and almost zero role in restorative justice work that we're doing right now in our schools. We also then finished off the last of our committee work reporting, and we're moving, I think, towards like the last quarter, I think, of this committee, where we're hoping to, at our next meeting, have members bring concrete proposals for recommendations, and we'll discuss that, that we'll then put out to the community, and then have community meetings where they'll be able to advise in on these recommendations. Hopefully, then, skidding to you, bringing the recommendations to the board, I'm hoping by May. So, that's where we're at with those.
All right. Thank you.
Next meeting's third Wednesday, I believe.
Is there a question?
No, no. I was just crossing my finger. They will have recommendations by May. That was all that was, was my fingers crossed.
Okay.
Waving them at Dean.
Yeah, well, me too.
Yeah.
Next item on the agenda, Other Business. So, we'll move to Other Business, and I'm just going to go right to motions, and then we can deal with it as questions come up. I'll move that, the first item is 12-1 Annual Capacity for Open Enrollment Determination, and I'll move that in regards to open enrollment application for the 18-19 school year, the district not establish any space limitations for regular education space. It is further recommended that in regard to open enrollment applications for the 2018-19 school year, the district determine that no spaces available in LEAP, NEON, and school-based alternatives and next steps, special education programs. All other special education programs and services will have no space limitations.
Second.
Been moved to second. Questions. Nikki.
If we, if we are, sorry, gotta get this, if we're a school that says we're not doing cuts, we're not doing caps, then we shouldn't do cuts and we shouldn't do caps. Very simply, if we cut NEON, if we limit numbers in NEON, limit numbers in LEAP, and put recommendations, restrictions on open enrollment, what we are saying is that's acceptable. Again, those programs involve behavioral, mental health, and disability. Yet, we just said that we don't do that, that we provide services equally for everyone. This is just more evidence showing that we don't.
Ms. Merk. Yeah, I have to disagree with Nikki here. What, these are programs that we need to have available for the students who live in our district, and not have those spaces taken up by people transferring from other districts specifically for very, very high-cost services that other districts don't provide. In an ideal world, funding would be such that, that, you know, actually, prior to the recent change, high-cost special education funding would follow students. Unfortunately, it doesn't any longer, and we need those spaces. And if we have out-of-district students taking those spaces, then we literally have no place to put our students. And we can't afford to expand the number of spaces. So, I respectfully disagree with that position, and we'll be supporting caps on LEAP and NEON, and calling for better state policy. Ms. Merk.
Yeah, I think it's really important to make sure we understand the context. One, there's no cuts being proposed here. And second of all, the caps, there are no caps for MMSD students. And in fact, right now, without having those caps, we're preventing MMSD students from enrolling. And I think other districts have to be responsible for the people. People choose their districts and where they're going to live, and this is crowding out our own, because we don't know at the start of the year, or when we have to accept open enrollment, as to how many of our own students are going to. And many of those students need spaces during the year to be able to. And if we fill up those spots, even we may think, it really hurts our own students down the road.
Anna? No, I'd like to make sure everyone gets theirs before we do double ups.
Okay, sounds good. You know, my thoughts on this is, I do agree we need to have spaces for our students, that that setting is appropriate 100%. I do have a little bit of a concern, though, with the argument that we can't let other folks in because the spaces are already filled, because I actually believe part of the reason that we don't have spaces within these programs is that the district has not made a clear plan for getting students that have been placed in the program out of the program. And so, I would feel more confident about putting caps on if we had really done a deep look at why there are, you know, why we don't have spaces within these programs currently. I guess, it sounds like we're saying that we don't have spaces because we have too many kids from the outside coming in and taking the spaces. I guess, I would like to see that proven a little bit better before capping these programs. I also have concerns that this cap on these programs serve predominantly students of color with emotional, behavioral disabilities. We've already put more restrictions in place last year in the Special Education Plan, where now we are currently rerunning kids' evaluations that transfer into our district if they are a student of color that are identified as EBD. So, I just think we need to watch what we're doing as a district and what message we're sending to students. And I understand, a lot of the students, the needs do come with a high cost, but I believe every child deserves a great education, regardless of their circumstances. And that's our obligation for these students.
Okay, Nikki.
My issue is this. I want our students to be in, please don't get me wrong. Same point, you don't turn away students at the door. We have an open enrollment by saying, we're not going to open enroll if you have certain disabilities. And that's what it virtually is. If you would qualify for this program, we don't take you. What that means? We're going to have more, not less, because people are going to drop their services, transfer, and then apply, therefore violating federal law if we do not provide it under the IEP. That terrifies me because we're setting ourselves up for lawsuit.
Okay. Do you have a comment?
I do, but go ahead, James.
Well, I have a question because did we, I mean, because this is an important one. We always talk about alternative programs and all. Did we do any discussions so board can really have clarity on this in a work group or anything? And what's our timeframe for this? I mean, how important is it? Because we haven't talked about, we don't have anything that would move back. How important is that we approve this tonight?
Well, it's a great question.
Versus making sure the board has real clarity and get questions answered on this one.
I'll let Dylan add to this, but I think everyone's a little bit right on this issue. Yeah, that there, I think that there's an immediate need to use the limitation on open enrollment for this subset of special ed alternative programs, because we need to get a handle on it. So, I think Anna's right, in that we do need to better understand the goals of these programs, the process by which a student can enter back into the general ed setting. These are our most restricted programs, and we'd like them not to be permanent placements. And so, that all makes sense. But I think in order for us to have the kind of space to get a clearer picture of the programs, what we've learned about their quality, their improvements, I think this is something we feel like we need to do because it's creating like a new problem, a new challenge. So, I think what the team wants is to be able to put this cap on for now, giving us the time and space to think about other changes as well. I think having a meeting at some point on specifically the special ed alternative programs will be important. On next Monday, with Ricardo's help, we'll be talking about the non-special ed alternative settings, what we need to do there. But I think it's going to probably beg the question for us to take a look at those special ed alternative settings as well. So, I think, yeah, I mean, I kind of, I get what everyone is saying on this, and we feel like it's something that we need to do now in order to get a handle on things. Dylan, do you want to add?
Statutorily, the caps have to be set, or the, I use the word caps, and I wrote to myself, these are not caps. But the determination of available spaces for open enrollment has to occur during the January meeting.
Okay, okay. So, back to your original comment, Jan, that most board members or all board members are pretty much correct. So, what I would advise then, it's somewhere either in, I assume this was maybe an Instruction Work Group item, that we have a better discussion here and talk about the concerns that board members are raising. And so, we'll move this forward. But, you know, I've heard some very good concerns around the table here. It sounds like we need to talk about this some more.
Yeah.
And so, let's make sure that we get this on Instruction Work Group somewhere and have a discussion about this and some of the changes that needs to be made. So, I think we should move on with the vote, as administration would like. And, but let's make sure we get this on Instruction Work Group for further discussion.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Morton, your advisory vote, please.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries 7-0. Okay, all right. Administrative Retirement Plan. I move that the Board of Education pursuant to the terms of the Administrator's Retirement Plan, which seeks to recognize the value of a long-term commitment to the district, approve the three applications.
Second.
Been moved to second. Any types of questions or comments for this? Seeing none. Morton, your advisory.
Thank you for your service.
Yes, indeed.
Really. It's a short list for us this year, but yeah, incredibly thankful. Good people.
But none are here tonight, so we thank them. Yes. Okay, Morton, your advisory vote.
Sorry. Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 7-0. Employment Policy 8005. I'll move that the Board of Education approves or proposes revisions to the Policy 8005 Employment as set forth in the materials prepared for the January 29th, 2018 Regular Meeting effective immediately.
Second.
Moved to second. Questions or comments? Seeing none. Morton, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 7-0. Amendment to the 2017-18 Budget. Okay. I move that the Board of Education rename the first line of the Tax Incremental District TID-25 Schedule presented to the Board in the appendix of the 2017-18 Board Approved Budget from Long Range Planning and Evaluation of 4K in Early Childhood to Evaluations and Long Range District Strategic Planning, thereby authorizing the use of the $100,000 for the purposes named as such.
Second.
Moved to second. Questions or comments? Mr. Merks.
I appreciate the fact that we were able to get work done around our early childhood without this expense, but I wonder what this renaming, is there an intended use under the new heading for this? So, it's kind of a general, we might want to use it. And I guess I look at this as we've got, what, six months left in this budget? And so...
There's no other intent, TJ, just so you know.
Yeah, I mean, and therefore, if, and any expenses that were spent under this heading would, I guess I'd like an assurance that they wouldn't be done in amounts of $15,000, therefore not coming before the Board. And that, and that, I would like to share the understanding that if this money is not spent this year, it will roll over to next year.
Yeah, and I would just add, TJ, that I think as part of the budget process that we've just launched this month, the TID-25 schedule in its entirety needs to be updated. So, there'll be an opportunity for you to see that and approve it as part of the next budget cycle.
Those are my areas of concern, and I will vote in favor with having stated those concerns.
Okay. Been moved to second. Morton, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries 7-0. Financial Transactions Advanced Learning Consultant Project. I move that the Board of Education approve the use of TID funds for the following. One, a contract with Scott Peters, Ph.D., through Partners in Advanced Education, Inc., in the amount of $39,960. Two, an additional allocation of $25,920 for substitute coverage for teachers at up to four schools participating in the professional development. Three, an allocation of $8,800 for site rentals and lunch for teachers at each PD session. And four, a total amount of $25,000 to be allocated to up to eight schools for pilots in the area of leadership and creativity.
Second.
Moved to second. Questions or comments? Nikki, then TJ.
I respect advanced learners. I happen to love the advanced learners program. However, I cannot vote on, vote yes on this. If we're willing to cut special ed, if we're willing to put caps on it, then I don't think we should be able to fund the others as well. I think it's a priority issue.
I am neither opposed nor in favor of this. I do, however, think that it should have come through the Instruction Work Group. And I understand that the common practice is that when we have expenses associated with plans, that things come before us in a similar manner to this came before us, because those expenses have been pre-approved via plant, budget plans, or planned budgets. In this case, I think that with the uncertain status of the Advanced Learner Plan, that, you know, one was submitted, we passed something on an interim basis and said this isn't good enough, essentially, then to have a relatively large and extensive expenditure in program come before us at a regular board meeting without any, without any opportunity to have explored it previously, to have asked questions of staff. I've got, you know, off the top of my head, a half dozen questions and probably some follow-up questions, and would appreciate the opportunity to do that before it came before a vote. So, I would, if there is support, I would, I would, I would ask that this be referred to the Instruction Work Group. If there's not support for that, then I would just be voting no.
I would support that.
So, we're back to one of these timing issues. Is there something that needs to be voted on tonight? What's the urgency here? Is it something that we should discuss a little more in a work group?
So, both of these actions, the professional development for the advanced learning specialists, as well as this idea of doing some innovations around advanced learning services themselves, I mean, both of those came out of the kind of initial approval of the, like, the one-year advanced learner plan. I just want to remind you all that we made a decision not to not approve the advanced learner plan, but to let the advanced learner plan begin to get implemented this year, and that... implemented this year, and that we would come back to it in the spring and add the additional two years. So, am I reorienting everyone? Okay?
That's your, your...
And in that one-year plan, TJ, I, I should, you're gonna look it up before I get a chance to, I know it. But I think that that plan, as I recall it, was pretty clear that we were gonna move forward with the advanced learning specialist role, which was kind of an improvement on the, the prior IRT role, and this idea of trying to do some innovative things this year was also there. So, I don't feel like the concepts are new. We've been searching for a way to, to execute on them. Why, and I think if we, if we waited, James, I mean, I just think we, I mean, there's only half of a school year left.
Yeah, you've refreshed my memory on the subject, so I appreciate, appreciate that you have refreshed my memory on it. It gets late, and so...
Mine is a lot to remember.
I forget things anyway. Now that it's late, I forget even more things.
I do want to be, James, if it's all right, I do want to be clear, though. I'm worried about TJ's previous comment on the other item, that, I just want to be clear.
Which one?
On the use of TID-25 and the renaming of that line, that a portion of this proposal is using that newly named line of the TID-25 funds, and that the, like, mini-innovation grants are coming out of the innovation line of the TID-25. So, I just want to be clear that that's where we would be getting the funding to move forward on those two aspects of the one-year advanced learner plan that was approved.
Thank you for your clarification. I'm clear. Any last questions?
I just want to say that, you know, I could, I could ask for someone who is familiar with this pilot to come up here and answer questions now, and I think that would be absolutely the wrong way to do things, which means that I'm asking to vote for $100,000 without a real opportunity to ask questions about the spending there. And I find that not a good way to do business. And so, again, I say that if there's support to, to refer this to a committee, I would favor that. If there's not support for that, I will be voting against it, and it's a required two-thirds vote, and I hope others join me.
I will join TJ in that vote.
I don't know if this is a question, or...
I think the previous...
It's what it says on the agenda.
Prior vote was the amendment to the...
Ms. Burke has the floor.
Yeah, so, we talk a lot about getting teacher input on innovation, and the, to me, this is exactly what it's doing. You know, we have to pay for substitutes. We've gotta have, when you bring them together, you gotta cover the classrooms. We have someone who is local here. We're utilizing that, that knowledge, and we're putting aside a small amount of money, when you consider it's eight schools, to pay for pilots, to get things started in this area of, of leadership and development. So, to me, this is aligned so strongly with exactly what the board has been talking about, about innovation, utilizing the knowledge of teachers in the classroom, getting them together with, with experts to be able to then move forward and start some implementation in a, in a constructive way, but also so, so we're learning together. I'm with you, TJ. Yeah, of course, we, we like to hear about these things, but sometimes they need to move, and we are, if we want to do them, and we have new personnel, and I applaud their efforts to, to get something rolling quickly so we can learn from it, we get that input, and it helps inform maybe something else that comes into the budget.
For sure.
Okay.
So, I hope that we, we support our staff in this type of initiative, and we get this going.
Yeah, and I sort of agree with TJ on this also, and I agree with administration. For example, item four, $25,000 to be allocated for big schools for leadership and creativity. I really would have liked to have talked about that one a little more, and, and so maybe there's some pieces in here that probably a little more urgent that we, you know, that would have had more support right now. But, you know, I'm gonna err on the side of the innovation piece and help move this forward, but I think that we do need to make sure we discuss these things ahead of time before we bring $100,000 expenditures forward. Last comment on the subject, Nikki Vandermeerle.
My comment is this, and sorry I've been talking a lot tonight, but my comment is, my comment is as follows, in that if we allow, the administration is wonderful. Innovation is wonderful. Going around the board, and this isn't the first time it's happened, sets a pattern. Pattern is precedent, precedent is binding. I'm sorry, but I can't vote for it for that reason.
Okay. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, James, Dylan wanted to clarify something about this two-thirds vote, and we think that might just be a mistake in the...
It says two-thirds vote on the...
Yeah, I know.
It was noticed.
It's a budget amendment, I believe.
The budget amendment was the prior vote. So, this is spending the budget that you just amended.
Right, which is different.
I don't think it is. It is. Amendment to the 2017-18 budget.
This was missed, then this was misnoticed.
Mislabeled.
It's, it's noticed as a two-thirds vote in, on the online one.
It's not noticed because it's under administrative content.
I'm sorry, notice to the board.
Okay.
The board was misinformed about, about the requirements here, and...
Yeah, and so, we're clarifying.
Yeah.
I would have voted, I would have voted no had I known that the other one was the two-thirds vote on this, on the previous one.
And that wasn't clear at all.
Um, if you, and the other one does not have the notice that it says two-thirds vote. So, that was misplaced. I brought this up with Kelly on Thursday in a phone call, and she said she would look into it and make sure it was correct, and it's not correct. And so...
Well, I'm sorry, TJ.
But no, this was, if, I would have voted no on the previous item.
So, we're on 12-5, and 12-4 also has, at least in my notice, has the two-thirds vote on it.
12-4 does not have it in mind on the online.
12-4 does not have it on mine either?
12-5 does.
Yes, it does. It's up here.
Oh, I'm looking on the paper.
Please note, this requires a two-thirds vote.
It's in a different...
But it's right there.
It's in a different place.
Yeah, so, it was there.
That was what I, I wrote.
Okay, so, uh, so it was noted correctly.
This says...
Okay, so, we're trying not to break our record of exceeding the nine o'clock time limit, so...
It's only an issue if it's not five to two.
Pardon?
If there aren't five affirmative votes, I think we should go back to it, so I want to be transparent, but...
There was five affirmative votes.
There were five affirmative votes. And, and that was properly noticed. It's this one that is misnoticed, and my mistake on that. It was noted, they were noticed, the two-thirds was noticed differently in the two.
Yeah, and I was just using, one is actually now more publicly noticed because that's in the public content, and then the other one, so I was...
I appreciate the discussion, but I'm calling requested. Morton, your advisory vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Kate?
I was an aye.
I didn't hear you.
She was an aye, I thought she said.
What?
I was an aye.
You was an aye. Okay. Motion carries five-two. Okay. Next item on the agenda, old and new business. We have no old business, but we do have some new business. Would like to take this moment to say thank you to Ms. Paulie. This is Ms. Paulie's last meeting, guys.
Yay!
Look, in all sincerity, it's been a pleasure serving with you. It's been a pleasure having you here in the district. It's really, really, I like to say congratulations and thank you. I think it's always great when, when we, we're not necessarily leaving because we want to. We leave because sometimes we just get a better opportunity, and I think that's your case. I, you know, anytime we get a chance to maybe go home, be close to family, I think that's very understandable. So, again, it's been a pleasure serving with you. It's gonna be hard to fill your shoes.
Yeah.
So, I'm saying that to you, Superintendent.
I know, the pressure's on.
So, don't just bring somebody in here that's feet are too small, and, and so make sure we get the right person to, to at least try to replace Ms. Paulie again. Congratulations on your new opportunity, and it's been a pleasure.
Yeah, I want to echo those same sentiments. Dylan is not only an amazing member of our team, but she is a friend, and we're gonna miss her a lot.
Okay. I entertain, unless you have something you want to say, Ms. Paulie, I'll...
No, thank you very much, and you can adjourn.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, we adjourn.